All right, seven o'clock. Everybody ready? Okay, I'm gonna call to order the regular board meeting of the Board of Education on August 12th, 2020 at seven o'clock at Hubble Middle School. This is now our third meeting in which the Board has conducted its business live and in person at Hubble. We are again streaming this live on our district's YouTube channel for people to observe and listen to. As this is a regularly scheduled meeting, we do have business we need to conduct before we get to our oral report for an update on the reopening plans for the next, this school year. I'm gonna estimate that it's gonna probably be about fifteen to twenty minutes, maybe even more, before we get to that point. So for people watching us online, just a little heads up for you and a reminder for board members to make sure you're talking closely into the microphone. Mrs. Hutchinson, would you please call the roll for the meeting?
Mrs. Booton?
Here.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Here.
Mrs. Erickson?
Here.
Mr. Hamlin?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Matheson?
Here.
Mrs. Hutchinson, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
... to the United States of America, and to the Republic, where we stand as one nation, under God, in the wisdom of liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first, we have a public hearing. I need to ask for approval to open the public hearing on the 2020-21 budget. Can I have a motion and a second?
Moved.
Moved by Mr. Hamlin, seconded by Mr. Matheson. Mrs. Hutchinson, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Booton?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mr. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Okay, do we have any people?
No.
Nobody has signed up for public comment on the hearing? Is anybody, I guess, in the audience? No, they would've signed up already, I suppose. So, that's it? Now we just are gonna make a motion to close the public hearing on the 2020-21 budget. Can I have a motion and a second?
Still moved.
Moved by Mrs. Erickson, seconded by Mrs. Booton. Mrs. Hutchinson, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mrs. Booton?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Okay. Any modifications to the agenda tonight that board members would wish to make? All right. Before we get to, we do have some public comments here. All right. So before we get to a public comment, I'd like to thank our community members who have shared their opinions and concerns with us on the District 200 reopening plans for the 2020-21 school year. We recognize that this is an extraordinarily difficult issue for many people, and I will admit, it has become more challenging over the last few weeks. We've received feedback from parents, grandparents, teachers, former teachers and staff, spanning all perspectives. We know that there is no clear approach that will make everyone satisfied. We hear, understand, and share the passion that everyone has communicated to us. But I also hope that our board and administration has nothing but the best interest of our students, teachers, and staff at the heart of all decisions. And I hope that everyone knows and remembers that. So we do have a few public comments, and due to the ongoing pandemic and continued interest in reopening plans for schools, we are temporarily amending our public comment procedures for this August 12th, 2020 meeting. We're gonna actually do it the exact same as we did last time. In accordance with Board policy 2.230, members of the public attending in person will have the opportunity to make public comments at the beginning of the meeting on agenda items, with another opportunity later in the agenda for public comments on non-agenda items. We do have, looks like about seven people signed up. Community members not attending this meeting in person and who wanted to provide comments to the Board had the opportunity to send an email to the Board between the posting of the agenda on Friday afternoon and five o'clock PM today. All board members received and will or have already read these emails. It was noted on the posted agenda that the emails were to include in the subject line that they were intended for acknowledgement at the August 12th, 2020 board meeting. These emails will be acknowledged but not read in their entirety and placed in the Board communication log or a public record. During this time period, we received emails from, Dr. Shulley, you have the log?
I do.
I think the list is probably about twenty-five people, so you acknowledge the people and generally the comment or subject they were referring to. It's probably not hard to guess.
You want to do these or you want to do the in-person first? Why don't you do the in-person and then?
We'll do the in-person first. Okay. So we'll adjust, we'll do the in-person first and then come back and read the log. As with all comments, please be aware that it's the Board's regular practice to not directly discuss or ask questions or take action on public comment until the time has been taken to gather adequate information. The Board is here to listen. Lack of action or direct response following public comments does not imply any lack of interest in what is being shared. Per Board policy, we have allocated thirty minutes for public comments, and comments on any one subject may be limited to twenty minutes. The Board may shorten the time allocation for each person to less than three minutes to allow maximum number of people the opportunity to speak. Looks like we'll probably have three minutes each. In addition, to preserve confidentiality, the Board and its president reserve the right to request that items relating to either personnel or students be provided to the Board privately or in writing for consideration in a future closed session if necessary. The Board must protect the civility and decorum of the meeting, and please be respectful to the duties of the, or for the duties of the Board, our district leadership team, and the democratic process in your public comments. Please include your name and whether you are resident of the district. Please limit your comments to a length that can be read in three minutes, and please be factual and courteous and do not include statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the Board or staff. Thank you for your understanding of the need for this temporary procedure for this meeting. So we have, again, seven, seven people signed up for agenda items, and first would be Marybeth Lang. Mrs. Crabtree will track the timing of these and raise her hand as we get close to the three minutes. Marybeth Lang?
Hi, yes, I'm Marybeth Lang. I'm a staff member and a Wheaton resident. And I just want to start by saying that I know that many, many thousands of hours of work, yes.
Will you please speak with your mask on?
Oh, with the mask, okay, sorry.
And, and the microphone, too.
Pardon?
Go ahead.
Okay. I know that many thousands of hours of work have gone into this reopening plan, and I do very much appreciate that. I know it's been a tireless summer for many, many people. I do still have a couple of concerns, though, both as a staff member and as a Wheaton taxpayer. First, I really worry about kids coming back thinking, "Oh, I'm gonna see my friends, it's gonna be so fun, we're gonna talk at lunch." And then, no matter how fun we try to make it, I just feel like they will feel like they're in detention a lot of the time. It's gonna be, you know, move away from your friend, you're too close, no, you can't share things, put your mask back on, only one person in the bathroom at a time, and you can't talk at lunch because you're not wearing masks. So I really worry about their emotional well-being and their attitude towards school going forward. Secondly, my other concern has to do with families of any staff member who might pass away. For my daughter, just for my example, I'm her only surviving member of her nuclear family, and I know that she lost me because we went back in person from day one with the virus still raging and other districts all around us going remote. She, you know, well, first she'd be devastated because no more family, but then she would also definitely hold the district and our union responsible for a willful and wanton act of disregard for our safety. And I do believe she's not the only family member who would feel that way if they lost a loved one. So, you know, as a conclusion, the taxpayer side of me says that we all need to really cross our fingers and pray that every student can follow all of these new rules consistently from the first day, even kids with cognitive disabilities, behavior issues, kids who've never been to school before. Cross our fingers that nobody comes to school sick, even unknowingly, and most of all, that nobody dies. So, thanks for letting me speak, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Next public comment is from Jessica Benazak. Am I close?
Good evening, my name is Jessica Benazak, and I'm a parent of two students at Wheaton-Warnville South High School. I'm here representing them and, and my own family, and also unofficially representing a group of about one hundred and seventy-five parents and educators. I've come today to make a statement in support of a revised school plan for the 2020-2021 year that begins with remote instruction for all students. First, I also want to acknowledge and commend the Board and administration for the incredible amount of work that has gone into the current combined plan of hybrid and in-person and the virtual academy. It's a complicated issue, but with the limited time that I have, I want to focus on questions for you regarding choices. Since we all, we all have heard so many, that so many parents chose this in-person option, I want to stick with the, the theme of choices. We were given those choices to make in July, just as our numbers were climbing. Many other area districts also gave their parents an initial choice as well. To date, District 200 is surrounded by districts who have changed their plans to a remote start for all, for all, for the beginning of the school year. And at last count, nearly seventy-five percent of those districts in our county will be starting remote. I have to ask, aside from perhaps planning, different planning strategies, what makes our district so unique that we are able to proceed when nearly three-quarters of our neighboring districts, even some with straddling feeder communities, have elected to start students remotely? Second, I also think that, you know, we would most, all of us would agree that in-person learning is the best for our kids in a typical school year, for a myriad of reasons. But a pandemic of a novel virus changes things, and, you know, the numbers change daily, but trends speak to a lot, and they're very telling. Our state has been in a steady but slow increase per IDPH in cases since the end of June. The DuPage County Health Department announced a concerning increase just in our area as recently as last week. South Wheaton is hovering at right around five percent positive rate. Are we really going to wait until there is a higher positive rate in order from the Health Department? Why not be proactive, recognize that we are on shaky ground, and change now to remote to let these families plan? And at this point, is parent choice really the best detriment determinant on what is the safest for our school community during this pandemic? And third, we all make choices every day that impact our community at large, whether we're wearing masks or keeping ourselves separated. The choice facing this district is one that carries obvious significant weight. But almost a hundred thousand children were infected by COVID-19 in the last two weeks of July. There is mounting evidence that kids carry this virus at a higher level than adults. Our kids and their families are not the only ones impacted by opening the schools. Teachers, staff, their families, and the larger community are impacted as well. I see all of the safeguards that have been proposed, I do, I've read all the plans, and I just challenge you to look down deep and ask if they're going to be enough. Does the implied benefit outweigh the risk? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is Jennifer Galowacki.
Good evening, my name is Jennifer Galowacki. I'm a speech pathologist in a neighboring school district as well as a District 200 parent. My fellow speakers tonight will probably speak of the dangers of our, to our children's physical health and safety, but I'm here to highlight the dangers of another health, their social and emotional health. Susan Darkersmith, a child trauma therapist, states that COVID-19 is potentially the greatest adverse childhood experience we may ever see in our generation, and the impact on children could last a generation. Starting the year remotely can allow District 200 to implement some of the best practice strategies to combat that acute trauma that has caused all students and staff to suffer from. Students abruptly left school on Friday, March 13th with the perception that school was not a safe place. Students will undoubtedly have anxiety about the return to school. As educators, we know, and as Dr. Salagi so wonderfully cultivates in our district, that strong positive relationships play a significant role in ensuring students feel safe and comfortable. But this year, those relationships are more important than other, than ever. Forming connections will be hindered by how vastly different school is going to look and feel with those required health and safety guidelines. Beginning the year remotely will allow students to see their teachers instructing from their classrooms to see that indeed school is safe. Allow our children to start the school year by being able to develop those crucial relationships with their teachers in a virtual manner by being able to see their faces, see their teachers smile during a moment of success or uncertainty, something that cannot be accomplished behind a mask. In fact, the CDC now suggests a slow and intentional return to in-person instruction. Nothing of your plan speaks to the tune of slow, intentional, and safe. During the last meeting, there was the discussion of choice related to the return to Learn Plan and how the data demonstrates the desire of the community. That data is a misrepresentation of the parents in our community. I am one of the seventy-five percent that registered for in-person, not because I feel it's safe to do so, but out of fear, fear for the increased trauma and detrimental effect of my children's social and emotional well-being. Virtual academy being taught by a teacher unfamiliar to them and in a class of peers not necessarily of their homeschool community during this time of uncertainty is a disservice and lacks creativity. In addition, parents who registered for the, for in-person did so out of fear that the district is unable to guarantee a place back at the students' homeschool if they initially registered for the virtual academy. I implore you to expand your surveys to provide more in-depth data surrounding your two options in order to make fully informed decisions. Gloria Steinem once said, "Being brave is not being unafraid, but feeling the fear and doing it anyway. When you feel fear, try using it as a signal that something really important is about to happen. You are all in the unique position to make the decision to roll the dice with human lives. Going ahead with your plan while trigger warnings are released from county officials demonstrates a lack, a distinct lack of bravery, creativity, and care for this community." In fact, with so many surrounding districts that have so bravely decided to reverse their originally developed in-person plans, continuing to forge ahead to bring District 200 students back into school buildings engages in gross negligence. I urge you to be brave for our students, your staff, and our community to begin the school year remotely. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Bryce Cahn.
Good evening, my name is Bryce Cahn. I'm the president of the Wheaton-Warnville Education Association, the teachers' union representing eleven hundred licensed educators in District 200. Over the past weeks, many have asked about the teachers' opinions and thoughts about the reopening plan. The reality is that we have been working with district administrators since March 13th on everything that has taken place related to remote learning and school reopening. While we don't always agree, we have always had the joint goal of providing the best educational experience for our students while working collaboratively to resolve our differences. Let me be clear, the union has not been actively advocating for the school year to begin remotely. We want to be in front of our students because we know this is best for teaching and learning, but we also want to do this in the safest manner possible. This work to plan the reopening of school has not been without strong opinions. Responding to a survey last week, forty percent of our members have indicated they would prefer to begin the year remotely and take the safest path forward. Another forty-five percent of our members have concerns but are willing to return to work under the current plan. These concerns range from a lack of clarity on the details, largely from there being so much information to process, to a simple idea of making sure that the plan can be executed as outlined. There are other reasons for sure, but to address these concerns, the district must demonstrate a strong commitment to implementing the plan with actions to support it. This includes supporting the enforcement of mask-wearing, which is now a Board policy, as well as physical distancing protocols. This cannot be something that is only enforced by a small group of people, it must occur at all levels of our district. The connection with the DuPage Health Department providing continuous information around guidance and protocols have been at the center of the plan to reopen. At this time, they are continuing to indicate that it is acceptable to reopen schools. This is also consistent with other public and professional medical organizations on whom we depend for guidance, as we are not medical professionals. As these recommendations change, the district's plan to reopen should change along with it, without taking any shortcuts and fully complying with recommended protocols. If we are unable to meet that standard, then we must be prepared to pivot and chart a new course to keep our students and staff as safe as possible. That said, there continue to be logistical issues that we, that make reopening school challenging. There have been many hurdles that we have jumped collectively and collaboratively, but as we see the finish line quickly approaching, there continue to be areas we must resolve. While I believe we will be able to solve these problems, if for any reason things fall short, I can assure you it will not be due to a lack of effort or creativity in our, from our collective group. Our teachers are willing to work, and this work continues to come with concerns from our members about the capability of the district to meet the guidelines. As we do not know what the future will bring, this may be our only chance to bring students together and best serve our community. This past spring reminded us that education really does affect the whole child, and it is best served through in-person teaching and learning, but only if we can do it in the safest way possible. Those are standards we cannot compromise. Thank you for your time tonight.
Okay, thank you. Next is Bob Hupp.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I'm here on behalf of the Student Excellence Foundation, and I'll make this brief since there are a lot of other things going on. My wife and I have lived in Warrenville since 1978, and our two children attended District 200 schools. Our granddaughter graduated this year, 2020, she's one of that unique class, and I've served on the Student Excellence Board since 2015. The foundation's mission is to engage the community to enrich educational experiences that empower students to reach their greatest potential. One of the ways we do that is through funding district-wide initiatives, annual commitments to projects that impact a large portion of the district. One of those initiatives, known as Z-Space, is on your agenda tonight as part of a list of items to be gifted to the district from the foundation. Z-Space is a virtual reality system for enhancing instruction in the sciences and math. Its initial application will be for high school anatomy. On February 29th, before coronavirus, the foundation hosted our annual Swing for Student Excellence fundraiser, and we successfully raised more than fourteen thousand dollars to bring Z-Space to both District 200 high schools. The equipment has now been purchased and delivered, and training occurred yesterday, as I understand it, preparing anatomy teachers in the high schools to use the equipment with students. We're grateful for our partnership with the administration and the Board of Education. We're pleased to bring Z-Space to District 200 to enhance educational opportunities. I want to briefly update you on two other matters. Because of Corona, our annual Celebrate Our Stars event to honor District 200 distinguished educators was, was held virtually. If the Board has not yet reviewed the video, we encourage you to do so, it's available on our website. We were thrilled to offer a forum this year where our distinguished educators could share it from their hearts. While we could not be together in person, we were pleased with this opportunity to honor our educators. Finally, you're aware of the Food Insecurity Crisis Fund, which the foundation implemented in March. We're grateful for the support of District 200's staff, including Erica Loakano, Director of Public Relations, and Tracy Burnham, Social Work Department Chair, the Wheaton-Warnville Education Association. PTAs around the district, we received two outside grants as well, and last but certainly not least, the generosity of over one thousand seven hundred, excuse me, one thousand seven hundred donors to date. The Food Insecurity Crisis Fund has provided three thousand six hundred seventeen boxes of food containing a week's worth of groceries to families facing food insecurity via weekly mobile food pantries. The foundation is prepared to fund mobile food pantries through October, and also, at least as important as that, we are in discussion as to how this fund can best serve district students and families who will continue to be affected by COVID-19 for the foreseeable future. Possibly some of the issues that are under discussion now, we might be able to help with. So, thank you.
Thank you. Margaret Votava?
Hi, my name is Margaret, I don't know if you can hear me, my name is Margaret Votava, and I have two kids in district. I am not a great public speaker, so I've written everything down, and positively for you, it's in large font because my eyes are small, so it's, it may not last too long. So I'd like to say that I'm extremely grateful to all of you for the continued hard work, well-developed plans, patience, and professionalism throughout this ongoing public crisis. And I'd like to reiterate a couple of points that you already know. Number one is that the county health department is publishing the data and leaving it to the people in the districts to respond accordingly. So it's, it's a district decision and not a public health decision or from the county health department. And as you have already heard, many surrounding districts such as Batavia, Naperville, and Glen Ellyn have already opted for their hybrid options to be temporarily online only, at least for the middle school and high school levels, when the older kids can participate in synchronized learning at home, while the parents, if they have to work outside the home, can do so safely. As I expressed in email in the past, in the interest of public health, I believe it's time to temporarily to move in that virtual mode only for our hybrid model as well, at least for the older students. The majority of our students are young and healthy, and the risks are low that they will individually become seriously ill. I'm not particularly worried about my children coming home and being very ill, but the students are just a piece of the pie. There's the teachers, families, and the public as large as these asymptomatic people move throughout the community. I do hear comments along the lines of, "Sign up for virtual only if you are concerned," and I have a couple of comments in that, in that regard, and primarily, number one, what trumps everything else, is it's still a public health issue, and, and I think we really want to be at home virtually just for the public at large. I would, on a personal note, I would also like to say that I don't think the virtual academy is a hundred percent equal to, equal to the hybrid model because you can't guarantee synchronous learning for all classes. So my, my son is a, is a rising senior, he's taking a lot of specialized classes. If he can't have synchronized learning for those, I think he will fail miserably. So I think we personally, my family, is in a, in a position to, to decide whether we're trading off on his future versus our, our family health and public health. As people have already said, there's twenty percent of families that have opted for virtual only, and there's a similar kind of number that want in-person only, so let's say for illustrative purposes, that's thirty percent. So that would leave the remaining fifty percent of families that are like me, that would prefer to learn in-person, that would prefer in-person learning if it were safe, but if it's not safe or are totally comfortable with it moving to virtual. And these are families that had to make that choice at the end of July, and conditions have changed. I think if you asked that survey now, there'd be that blob of fifty percent would, it would shift. of 50%, it would shift. Certainly, in my case, at least for one of my children, it would. And I know that we've had this discussion before, and I know that respectfully disagree on where that line is, on whether or not, when to pull the plug and move to virtual. I think the district has justifiably asked parents to be understanding as their plans adapt to the evolution of this pandemic. Oh, just one second, sorry. And I would kindly ask that the reverse also be true, that families are allowed to modify their choices before the start of school. And I would also like to understand, for my particular issue, as my seniors enrolled in these classes, I'd like to know which ones would be, in the virtual academy, which ones are synchronous or not. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And the last comment is from Morgan Bainbridge, or Bainbridge? Bainbridge? All right.
Hello, thank you. Can you hear me? My name is Morgan Bainbridge. I'm a parent of a student here in District 200, and just wanted to add on what has already been shared tonight. And thank everybody for their hard work to put the plans together to return to in-person learning. But I think with the changes in the conditions and what's happening in our county, I think it would be best that we do move to virtual learning. But all the work that has taken place will not be lost, because the hope is and the belief is that there will be a time where it is safe to return to in-person learning. And so, all that planning effort that has taken place can be implemented then, and you'll just be that much further ahead in the process. A couple of items that I'm particularly concerned about, because I have an elementary-age student, is the spacing. So, tonight, the chairs are perfectly spaced, six feet front, side, back, all around. My concern is at an elementary level with the number of students who did sign up for in-person, that that is not a possibility, and that's a big concern to me and my family. Another concern is a student, the way it's been communicated, students, if there is a case of COVID in the school and the classroom, students that have had direct contact with that person will be sent home to quarantine. But if that is my child or any child, who will be teaching that child during that two-week quarantine? Because that's a big loss of time for students, especially at the elementary level, to miss out. And many parents are working, and we just don't have the capability to supplement that teaching at that time. Plus, I mean, the teacher's plan. So, I would like to know what the plan is for that. And then also, just another last comment, sorry, is school is not a daycare. I think a lot of parents, I signed up for in-person. My daughter was insisting she wanted to go. It was better for her to learn in-person and not virtual. She did not excel last spring. No matter how much I encouraged her, it would be different. It would be like school, be better than school. It wasn't an option. But I feel like a lot of people also sign up for that because they have to go to work. I too have to work. But it's not a daycare, and I don't want the decision to be made because children need to be at school. They need a place to be. The decision needs to be made based on what is best for the students, the faculty, the staff, and the community, in keeping everybody safe and healthy. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for the people who've made public comment. Now, we'll go back to the log of people who sent in emails to the Board. We're just going to get them acknowledged by name, and they're all kind of about the same topic.
Yeah, all emails received by the Board were on the reopening plan topic, and so I want to acknowledge the emails that came in from Dean Bureau, Katie Wood, Amy Klaus, Kristin McCord, John Garciau, Kate Schleyer, Susan Malchesky, Claire Anis, Jay Mejeda, Amber Hardy, Mary Ellen Schwartzkopf, Erin Growth, Leslie Duesy, Gus and Tracy Arceo, Katie Wood, Doug Gilmore, Diane Duddy, Jessica Banasek, Nick and Cara Baker, Mary Ellen Schwartzkopf, Jeff Chan, Kathleen Ryan, Janice Gilmore, Michelle Graham, Rosalie Jennings, and Jennifer Glowacki.
Thank you for that. And again, all those comments were, as kind of I suggested at the beginning, they were both sides of the fence here in terms of what we should do as a Board. Some people very passionate about the need to change our plan and reopen in-person, and some people very passionate about the need to continue with our plans and how important it is for kids to be live and in-person with their teachers and classmates. Next up on our agenda is the superintendent report. Dr. Shuler?
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. Just two things that I'm going to highlight quickly for the Board tonight under our report, so we can move into the agenda. Number one, I want to let the Board know that we did today receive the fourth quarter categorical payment from last school year. So, while we're beyond that school year, the good news is that that meant we received it in the time that it's actually, through the audit of the financial report, it will have been recognized in the fiscal year that it was supposed to. So, we did get made whole on all four categorical payments for last year. Second thing, and I shared this, I think with the Board previously, there is a meeting tomorrow with the developers that have proposed the development property on the Nokia, behind the Nokia building. So, that piece of property actually sits right on the boundary line of District 203 and District 200. And so, the proposed development has both multifamily town homes, as well as about 205 single-family lots. All of the single-family lots actually sit in the District 200 side of that boundary line. The multifamily moves across the boundary line. So, again, that does not mean that is done deal, or those homes are going to appear in the immediate, but that is a first step in the process, and I just think important to recognize for the Board that a development of 200 homes, if you use a typical yield table from, I think, the Naperville study that a lot of developers still use, that's potentially 400 to 450 kids that would come into the district. So, it is without a doubt that in the future, you will be having a discussion about boundaries. We will not be able to accommodate that all within the elementary boundary where that sits. I think right now, that piece of property is actually in the Whittier boundary, and the way that that comes down, it's kind of right by Whittier and Weasbrooke where they come in. So, we'll have to look at that. Again, that's down the road. That's not in the immediate, but we'll keep you apprised as that navigates through. And if you have not been, southern end of the district, in a few of the developments in Warrenville, a number of those housing developments are really popping up as well. Most of them are multifamily developments that are along Route 59, but those are beginning to build quickly. So, it'll be interesting to see this year if we start to see any student yield out of those developments. That's all I got.
Okay. Any questions for Dr. Shuler? Okay, next up on our agenda is the consent agenda. We actually have two separate consent agendas tonight. The first one has 11 items on it. Number one is acceptance of gift from Sandberg Elementary School PTA. Number two is the acceptance of the gift from the Student Excellence Foundation, which we heard about a little bit earlier in public comment. Number three is approval of a resolution approving travel, meal, and lodging expenses. Number four is approval of an annual certification of serious safety bus routes. Number five is approval of a food service management emergency contract for high schools. Number six is approval of modifications to the 2020-21 high school parking fee. Number seven is approval of a Cisco SmartNet/Hans renewal. Number eight is approval of the Microsoft Volume Licensing Agreement renewal. Number nine is approval of bills payable and payroll. Number 10 is approval of minutes from July 8th, 2020, open, and July 29th, 2020, open, and approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to March 2019 as allowable by law. And finally, number 11 is approval of personnel report to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of absence of administrative, certified, classified, and non-union staff. Are there any items Board members want removed from this consent agenda? Okay, any information on these from Dr. Shuler?
So, two things. One, just a thank you, the first two items. On your consent agenda, very generous gifts, Mr. Help us here from the foundation, and then you're receiving a gift from Sandberg Elementary School PTA. I think in total, about $25,000 worth of gifts, so we're greatly appreciative of that. Second thing I just wanted to mention, number three on the consent agenda, the resolution approving travel, meal, and lodging expenses. I don't actually anticipate that policy being used this year. I don't believe you're going to see travel of our employees or our administrators, but you are required every year to pass that at the time of your budget. So, that's just setting parameters. That is not indicating that you're allocating any money toward it, but I think the Board received a question about that, and so I wanted to clarify it. And then, last thing I just wanted to mention on the personnel report, on your new hire report this evening, there is a relative of a district administrator, Mr. Farley's son, has been recommended for hire in the district per our policy. We just wanted to make sure that that was clearly recognized. Before you vote on that, I can assure you in having reviewed that hiring process, that that was done entirely by the building, that chose the candidate that they felt strongest about for the position. But as per our policy, we just want to make sure we disclose that.
Okay. Any questions or comments from Board members?
Everyone. On the employment and resignation schedule, how many people would you say on their, you know, leaving because of COVID, or the, we'll call it because of the in-person program?
How do you?
Yeah, we've had about three or four resignations. We've had some retirements as well. Some were involved because of COVID, and some were retirements because of COVID.
Ballpark numbers?
Two or three resignations, and I think we're about maybe seven as of right now, retirements.
And then, have we engaged, you know, hired enough staff now to proceed, assuming we do in-person? Do we have enough staff? I mean, this list doesn't seem to be large enough, is my point.
Yeah, we are doing a lot of the hiring now. So, I think, Dr. Kyle, when we get to the reopening report, we'll talk and give you an update on that, but you would not have seen those yet on the personnel report.
Okay. So, they're not on this report. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? Okay, can I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Crabtree?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Erickson. Mrs. Hutchinson, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mrs. Booten?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Mappuson?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes. Okay, the consent agenda is passed as presented. And then, secondly, we have a policy posting consent agenda. We have 12 items on here, 11 of which are just approval of something we posted before. The first one is approval to post a revised policy 4.150 facility management and building programs for public review and comment. And then, the next 11 are actually approvals of revised policy. Number two is policy 2.125, Board Member Compensation and Expenses. Number three is approval of revised policy 2.160, Board Attorney. Number four is approval of revised policy 5.60, Expenses. Number five is approval of revised policy 5.150 Personnel Records. Number six is approval of revised policy 5.280 Duties and Qualifications. Number seven is approval of revised policy 6.135 Accelerated Placement Program. Number eight is approval of revised policy 7.70 Attendance and Intruency. Number nine is approval of revised policy 7.90 Release During School Hours. Number 10 is approval of revised policy 8.10 Connection With the Community. Number 11 is approval of revised policy 8.30 Visitors To and Conduct on School Property. Number 12 is approval of revised policy 8.110 Public Suggestions and Concerns. Are there any items Board members want removed from this consent agenda? Okay, any information, Dr. Shuler?
Information.
Any comments or questions from Board members?
I do. So, I just want to, with policy 8.30, I believe it was last meeting, I talked about asking for that to come back to, or maybe it was the meeting before that, to the policy committee, because it does state in there that all visitors must show identification within our schools. And currently, right now, that practice typically only happens at the high school. So, I want to make sure that now we communicate with our community members. I know that I'm someone that sometimes would run in and not have my wallet with me with my ID, that we will now be checking identification of any visitors that are coming into school. I just want to make sure that community members understand that and that schools are following that policy.
I'll just make one comment on the first item, which is a posting of the revised policy. So, the Board is aware that over the summer, I think it was Madison School, there were some exterior site work and landscaping work done. And so, after meeting with the members of that immediate neighborhood, or meeting with a member of that immediate neighborhood and talking to some others, we proposed some changes to that policy in terms of how improvements to landscaping would be done around school grounds. So, that's what is being addressed in this particular policy revision that's being posted tonight. Okay.
I've got one other comment, question. Can you, on policy 2.125, Board Member Compensation, can you reiterate what Board Member Compensation and benefits are? Just want to make sure.
There is no compensation for Board Members, though.
So, we get all this glory for nothing?
But that policy is just establishing, similar to, I think, the item that was approved earlier on travel expenses. If the Board were to attend a conference, it sets parameters around expenses at that event.
I would just comment, Jim, that now is not the right time to be pointing that out.
You're right. You mean 500 emails later.
Okay. Can I have a motion and a second to, did you have a question?
Nope.
Okay, a motion and a second to approve the policy posting consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Hanlon?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Booten. Mrs. Hutchinson, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Booten?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Mappuson?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, the policy posting consent agenda has been approved as presented. Now, we get to our oral reports, which is an update on the District 200 reopening plans for the 2020-21 school year. Dr. Shuler?
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. So, the Board is aware, the Board will remember, that we've had two presentations and discussions on the reopening plan, the first being on July the 8th, and then we scheduled a separate committee, the whole meeting, I think it was three weeks later in July, to review updates to the plan. So, we're really not here tonight to present significant new information to the Board. I believe most of the information from the plan itself has been shared or presented, but we do want to give you updates on a couple of key areas relative to the plan. I think some of them have been addressed tonight through public comment and in email and questions, certainly to the Board. So, we do want to give you some updates on just the whole area of the health metrics and where they sit, and that whole area of guidance to the district. We'll talk a little bit about staffing, which was the second hurdle that we identified in our letter to the community last week, and then talk about remote learning 2.0 and the virtual academy, because that's been an area of question. And so, just by way of recap, as I mentioned, on July 8th, we presented our reopening plan. Those plans were built on guidance that was issued by ISB and the Illinois Department of Public Health. That guidance was released on the 23rd and the 26th of June, but I think as the Board and likely the community is well aware, there have been several iterations of that guidance document that have continued to be released through this summer. In fact, we got one as recent as 4:00 this afternoon that we're going to talk about in a little bit, because it does have some really significant implications as we think about reopening plans. And so, I want to reiterate with our plans that we've always said every time we've shared an update, that that's the plan as of that date, under the full expectation and understanding that conditions change, as well as those guidance documents change. That guidance has been fluid, and it's required us to adjust and readjust several times, but our plans really have always been built on five foundational beliefs that we have not wavered from and we won't waver from. One, we do want to make sure that the health and safety of our staff and students remains front and center. Two, we want to make sure that our plans are sustainable. So, not only can we get to open schools, we would be able to keep the schools open. Three, we want to make sure- to make sure that we're balancing or providing as much or appropriate rigor to our academic programs and our SEL programs for students, and that gets into a lot of the discussion on the best way that we go about educating. We think it's essentially important that we prioritize reestablishing relationships with our students and meeting their SEL needs. And then finally, we want to build a plan that's compliant with all state and local directives. I do want to just make one comment, because I've seen it in a few of the, the questions. We have not moved forward with our reopening plans simply because we've been planning for a long time. It is true that we've been planning for a long time. We've been on our reopening plans since May, but that's not the reason that we've continued to move forward with our plans. We built our plans with the intent of ensuring that we were ready with several options when the guidance came clear, and we wanted to be able to, to respond to them. And so we've done a lot of work to position ourselves to be able to do that. On Friday, I did send a letter to the community, and in the letter, we affirmed our intention to move forward with our reopening planning, but identified two critical hurdles that we still needed to make sure we can clear. Those hurdles included the current community transmission metrics, as identified and tracked by our local health department, and our ability to staff our plan to make sure that we can open our schools. We've said from the onset that we value our ability to interact with our students and our staff in person. We believe strongly that it remains important, but it has to be done only when our local and state health departments tell us it's safe to do so. That is their responsibility. And so I think you heard a, a question or a comment earlier about that being the district's responsibility. I'm not a health expert. Nobody on this board is a health expert. That's why we have local health departments and a state health department, and they are responsible for providing us guidance around that. I've read many articles and followed all of the public health dashboards, and the information is complicated and at times can actually seem contradictory to each other. With each comment that we've received from members of our staff and community, it seems like a new piece of information surfaces. And the board and administrative team have continued to focus our plans not around public pressure or the, the tenor of the email tally, but on information that's provided from our community partners and our health experts. So the two updates that I want to give the board tonight in that, that vein is, number one, if you look at the DuPage County dashboard, as well as the, the dashboard that's maintained by the Illinois Department of Public Health by county, it tracks certain metrics relative to the COVID virus. Those are, those include cases per 100,000, positivity rates, hospitalizations, deaths as a result of the, the virus, right? All metrics that are tracked by county. That was based on the governor's reopen Illinois plan. And so there are benchmarks that sit on that dashboard. The one benchmark that does track high on that dashboard is cases per 100,000. It, in recent weeks, it crept up over 50 per 100,000, jumped up to 70. Last week actually came down a little bit in its trend, but, but that data does lag by a week in terms of how it's tracked on that dashboard. And so I would imagine that in the next week we will see another little uptick in that data. But positivity rate for the county and all of the other dashboards that are tracked on that metric continue to be in the, in the green zone. I cannot say with certainty, and I want to be clear, exactly what criteria other districts have chosen to base a, a change in, in their decisions. I've seen a lot of districts that have mentioned or cited metrics, but I haven't actually seen specific metrics that sit on other districts. And so I think it is imperative that we continue to rely on that partnership with the DuPage County Health Department, right, as we are making that decision. I was hoping by this evening, what I'm now understanding is by tomorrow morning, that the DuPage County Health Department will in fact be releasing a set of metrics intended to set that threshold around reopening. And I'll tell the, the board very honestly, I don't know exactly where that set of dashboard or metrics is going to sit, but I would anticipate that whatever threshold they set, we are going to be inching closer to that. And so I, I want to, want to tell you that honestly, that I'm not anticipating that we will necessarily hear that we've crossed a threshold that would suggest it's not safe to operate in-person instruction, but it, we, I cannot deny the fact that obviously those, those numbers have gone up. Second thing that I do want to mention, because I said it a little bit earlier, the Illinois Department of Public Health and ISB released a new set of guidance documents today. I've provided the board with a copy of that in your green folder. They come in the form of frequently asked questions, and I think these questions are important, especially as we think about that second bullet in our reopening plans about our ability to keep schools open once they open. And so I, I've said, often use the example that the guidance documents from ISB and IDPH help us understand the parameters under which we can open schools. It is our local health department that will also help us determine how long those schools can remain open, because they are the entity that will consult with us when we're responding to confirm cases, doing any kind of contact tracing or notification in the plan. And important to say, because I, I say it in this meeting and I've said it, it is not a question of if there will be a confirmed case, there will be a confirmed case of COVID-19. We see it in our community. We've seen it in some of the, the, some of the activities that have still taken place in our schools and some of the extracurricular opportunities and camps that have run, we have seen COVID. And so I, I think it's important to openly acknowledge that if a criteria for being able to reopen to any kind of in-person instruction is that we can totally avoid the possibility of a COVID case within the district, the, the metrics are going to tell you that's not likely to happen, right? The cases per 100,000 will certainly tell you based on the size of our district that there will be cases. So it is truly more about mitigation strategies you have to, to, to work to contain spread in those situations and keep isolated cases isolated, same strategy that's in existence out in the, in the community. But important in this set of questions from IDPH, because a couple of, of the new pieces of guidance that came out are some, some important pieces of information around when will individual students and/or staff members need to be out of school? And a particularly troubling, I think, piece of information or question in there is that the recommendation of IDPH is if you in fact have a symptom, I know if you've seen the symptom screening checklist for COVID-19, it covers a lot of things, a lot of common ailments that everybody says is experienced, whether it be a headache, throatache, a cough or a sneeze, things that can be attributed to other illnesses besides COVID-19. But the guidance would suggest that with even one symptom, that an individual does need to stay home and get an evaluation done by a doctor and ideally a COVID test. And so as you start to think about that applied to, to schools, I think, I think there is a genuine concern with amount of, of time that individuals may be out. There was some updated guidance on contact tracing, and one important piece of information that I do want to mention, especially as it would apply to our secondary schools, is that the definition of a close contact has always been 15 exposure within six or six feet for a period of 15 minutes or longer. And that definition was revised by IDPH now to include a cumulative definition over the course of the day. So not 15 minutes in one block of time, but a combined 15 minutes over the course of the day. And so admittedly, as you think about passing periods and you think about some of the opportunities for, for movement, I, I think there's, 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 is without a doubt some concern with that. They provided some updated guidance on how close contact is going to apply on a bus. And because ISB has defined the capacity limit of a bus as 50 students, if in fact there were 50 students on a bus, sitting two to a seat, it is very likely that that is one window of time during the day, unlike our classrooms, where students would be sitting less than six feet apart. And so the ISB guidance is that if in fact there is a case on a bus, very likely that the three rows in front, three rows behind would be deemed as close contacts for, for that individual case. There was a question earlier, I think in public comment, and I do want to clarify, we have mapped out the classrooms at our elementary schools. There are no desks that are less than six feet apart. So the capacity limits within our classrooms were built on that, that requirement of six feet. Same is true at our, at our secondary schools as well, but that whole area of the bus does, does continue to be a concern. And then the last thing that I wanted to mention in this document that again truly was new information the other day, is that if in fact there's a case of COVID-19 within a school, the required cleaning protocol will be that you, as much as possible, clear the space for at least 24 hours before you come in and, and clean and disinfect. And again, as you start to think about secondary schools and, and movement, in effect, what I, I think that, that the concern point around that is very likely if a student moved significantly through the building, you are probably shutting a school down for 24 hours with a confirmed case. And again, that, that is revised information from the, the state that we want to, to comply with. There, there's also some additional information just on PPE and, and cleaning that we're going to have to make some adjustments to, but, but again, I, I wanted to make sure that the, the board clearly is aware of, of that information, because I think especially as it applies to, to bullet two, and especially at the secondary level, I, I do think that's realistically, that's going to challenge, I think, our ability to keep schools open, right, once we get, we get kids back. So let me stop there with those two updates and, and entertain questions, comments from the board. And I think important to know and understand that while, certainly while members of the community have had an opportunity to share comments, to engage on the topic of reopening schools, I just think important to know that this is the board's only opportunity to engage in, in dialogue on the reopening plan. If you guys were to have significant conversation outside of the confines of a public meeting, that would not be a legal public meeting, and so you, you don't. And so I, I share that simply to make sure that the community is aware of the fact that this is your opportunity to engage and to ask important questions as we move forward. So I'm going to stop there and see what questions I can answer for you.
I have some bussing questions. What kind of range of capacities do we have on the buses that we're using? Are, I, I guess I don't know off the top of my head how many kids are on a full bus, for instance?
Kyle, do you hear that?
It was about capacity on the buses?
Yeah, what is the range of capacities?
71 to 77 is generally the capacity on the school buses that are out in our, our field right now.
Then, two questions related to that. One, do we have the ability to add buses so that we aren't putting as many kids on a bus? And secondly, have we been asking or tracking as people sign up, register for in-person instruction, who's actually planning to take buses? Because I can imagine some parents might elect to, to drive their kids as opposed to putting them on the bus just because of these issues. Do we know?
Yes and yes is the, the answer to that. So we did ask that as a registration question so that we could, could track it. I, I, one of the difficulties with that is that, that is a, that is a right given under the school code for individuals to access our transportation plan. And so while we can ask if they will be using it, and they may choose not to, we still have to plan for the potential capacity, right, within our buses. But, but the answer to the second part of that, I, I believe Mr. Farley actually had, only had to add one bus route. Part of that is based on the way that the hybrid schedule works. That inherently reduces capacity on a, on a bus route, right, as we're sitting in there. So all of your buses will be under the, the 50 capacity limit. Actually, it's 49 on the student side because of the, the driver on the bus. So you have no routes that are over, and I think you had to add one route to be able to do that.
Okay. And did I correctly remember hearing that we were going to do assigned seating on buses and attempt to seat children with their own siblings?
Yep. Yes, there, there will be assigned seats on the bus, and the desire would be to put students with members of their household in, in that assigned seat.
What does that look like on the first day of school when kids line up for the bus? Who's assigning the seats and figuring all that out?
Yep. Dr. Slaggy, you want to take that? I know that's something you've been working on with the elementary team.
Yeah, at the, at the elementary level, Mr. Farley's arranged, actually, and I've worked with our principals to bring the buses before the school year starts to the schools so that we can assign seats. And then we're actually planning to have some of our staff members on the bus when the bus arrives to coordinate for the kids to sit in their, their assigned seats. So a little preemptive planning to be meeting the kids when they, when they get on the bus to start. So plan is to have the, the seats arranged, set up, and then a person on there to guide them on the first day, actually the first week.
Good, thanks.
Did you want to ask another question before then? I want to ask.
I'm good.
Was there any more, a part of your presentation?
Not that first part, so no.
So there's, there's a second part?
Correct.
Okay, so let's just kind of go around the room, covering the first part. Want to go Dave and then Jim, if you have any more questions, and then Jim, and then we'll go around here, just to try to control.
But this is just to comment on this part?
The health department.
Yeah, the, the two health updates. The health, update on both the updated guidance and, and metrics on the Page County.
So any like general comments or things we will cover later? Is that right? You know, like I have a couple general comments, but not specific to what we talked about. We'll do that later.
So, okay, so let's, does anybody have any questions on the specific health issues? And then we'll have Dr. Schuler cover the rest of it, and then, then we'll kind of go around.
I do not have specific questions for that.
Okay. Jim, do you have any specific questions?
Yeah, I have a couple. Just looking at the first page of this, it talks about the, if a student is sent home sick with suspected COVID-19 symptoms, and then it goes through and lists what some of those symptoms are, must all, this is the question in the frequently asked questions, must all their siblings, household members be sent home as well and quarantined for 14 days? And the answer is yes. So basically, if we have a student who's sent home, not tested, obviously, not known if it's a true case, conceptually their entire family has to be quarantined.
Correct.
How do we, I guess the question, you know, how does that ever change? I mean, how, how does that student come back? I mean, you know, if, again, it's this uncertainty, they must be tested, is that what this is saying, without reading all the?
Yeah, so, so the way that they come back is one of two ways. Either, so if, if you have a positive COVID-19 case, that isolation period is 10 days. So 10 days from the positive test or the first symptom, that individual needs to be out of school at least 10 days. And then there's some other, other thresholds that they have to cross on fever, no fever, symptoms improving, right, those pieces that work in combination. So Jim, specifically to your question, if somebody has a symptom, right, and they go home, they move out of that, that isolation through, through either going to see a doctor, getting a test, and coming back with a note from a doctor saying that individual does not have COVID and is okay to return to school, or they run the, the 10-day isolation period. So it's one of the two.
Okay, but in that interim, the entire family must also conceptually quarantine according to the health department?
Any, any other siblings that are within our district would, would need to, to leave school as well.
Okay, and we're, well, but I think here it says the entire family.
Right, but the only, the only individuals we would be concerned about would be our, I'm, I'm saying for the purpose of school.
Yeah, okay.
Are the siblings that are at school.
Okay. So in that case, so again, it, it's a symptomatic, it's not a tested COVID. It seems arbitrary to me, I guess is my biggest concern. You know, it, you know, again, all the other symptoms of colds and things like that, you know, that really puts a, a challenge to, to the parents. to the parents. And, you know, we talk about liability issues. I heard some of that earlier. You know, if that's, if those parents don't quarantine and go to work, you know, what happens then? I don't know, you know, that concerns me a bit. And I know we don't have the answer to that, you know? But that is concerned now. And then when we go to contact tracing, that same student who now had this symptomatic case, whether it was walking through the halls or on the bus or whatever, what hap, I'm not quite clear without reading all this detail here. What happens at that point? Are those close contacts?
Asking how the contact tracing works?
Yeah.
Yeah, so one works in partnership with the health department. So, the health department has contact tracing experts that would work with our team internally. We've built a procedure that the building would immediately identify or assemble the contact tracing team that would work with the health department, work with the student and the family to trace back to the 48-hour window where the student was shedding the virus. So, the 48-hour window is 48 hours in front of the first symptom or the positive test if it's an asymptomatic student. And that is the 48-hour window that would be of concern. And so, you would work with the individual student and family to identify any students that may have been a close contact of the student. They get a contact directly from the school and the health department indicating they were a close contact and would be asked to quarantine. And then we've also identified a, another series of questions that we would ask, you know, what classes the individual was in, what bus they rode. So, any other students that were in the same classes but were not deemed to be a close contact would get what's called a low-risk contact letter. So, it's one that just simply indicates there was a positive case in their class, but their child was not deemed to be a close contact and no further action is needed. So, that's how the process, the process works.
Okay, if they were a close contact, then something different happens than if they weren't. So, going back to the initial, again, we have someone who may or may not have the disease, okay? So, let's say, you know, they're not, we're not, there's no mandatory testing, we're not testing. So, if a student on the bus or again in the hallways has a, you know, has symptoms, we don't know, again, for, you know, they go home. And who decides they're going home? The nurse, is there a nurse or?
Each of our buildings has both an evaluation room and then a regular health office. And so, the nurse in the evaluation room would make that determination.
Okay, so they go home then. And now we have this condition of unknown whether the child has it or doesn't have it, or a teacher as well. And then, when do we start notifying people of the contact tracing?
Immediately. As soon as the contact tracing begins, then those notifications happen immediately.
And it could be just nothing. I mean, it could. Okay. I'm good, I mean, that's.
Susan, any questions on this piece?
Do you just want questions at this point?
Yeah, do you have any questions regarding the health guidance?
No, I have comments, but I'll hold.
Okay. Rob, any questions on the health?
I have two statements, but yeah. Good?
On the health piece?
Yes.
Okay.
One is, I want to thank Bryce Khan for his statements about teachers' commitment and speaking with one voice as a teaching group and letting the board know their position and letting the community know their position. That was very important, and I really appreciate the aligned point of view and coming and speaking publicly about that, first thing. Secondly, I'm hesitant, but I'm going to speak. And I don't, just like I always, I don't speak for any board member. I don't speak for the superintendent. I don't speak for staff. But it's, this is me personally, and, you know, I'm irritated. I'm irritated by, we get an update today. What, school opens when, right? That's crazy. We had to reach out this week. Superintendent had to reach out along with other superintendents to ask for more guidance. And we got an email in response. And our local, I'll just talk to our local, health department is putting the board in a position to be a healthcare professional and make a healthcare, a health-related decision. We're not qualified to do that. We can make our best guess, but we rely on our health professionals at the state and local level to do their job. And I just don't feel they have, and that really irritates me. Again, I don't speak for anybody in this meeting, in this table, or anyone. I just speak for myself. But the fact that we're getting information and continue to get information, while I appreciate that we want timely updates, we had to reach out proactively. That's crazy. It's just, it's not appropriate. And so, I just wanted to vent a little bit and voice that frustration. I appreciate the superintendent proactively reaching out along with those other superintendents in the area to prod or.
Request from our health department, more guidance.
But we are not in a position to make these decisions in terms of health-related decisions. We are going to do the best we can. And, you know, I think the unintended consequence of this is it creates more anxiety. It creates more anxiety for our teachers, more anxiety for our community members, more anxiety for all those staff, all those involved in this process. And to me, that is just unnecessary. So, that's my statement.
First, anything on the health-related stuff?
As a fact, I want to high five. I want, I want to kind of piggyback on that as well because I am also very, very frustrated. You know, I feel like our state has us in stage four that is open schools. And then we get document after document after document that make it even more difficult to open schools. But nobody at the state level or the county level is taking that responsibility to say it's unsustainable. And when I, you know, I look at this and I see buses and that, how do we make a bus work with that? Now, it went from 15 minutes in contact in one sitting to 15 minutes throughout a day. I mean, those are becoming extremely unsustainable, but we're still sitting in stage four that they're telling us to open. And it's putting a lot of stress on school districts. It's putting school districts against other school districts. And I agree with Rob that we, we need to start holding the, you know, obviously, yes, we are not public health experts. We need to listen to what they say. But I also feel like responsibility needs to come from those, you know, ISBE, IDPH, and DuPage County Health Department to give us more guidance. And if they can't, and what they're putting out there is unrealistic, then why are we still saying we want schools to open? Why is the state still saying that? So, I just had to publicly say that as well.
Okay. Thank you. I can't high five either one of you, but I would. So, I just want to kind of zero in on this, you know, what is close contact? So, I'm reading this, and I understand that their language has shifted, you know, within six feet for at least 15 minutes now throughout the course of a day. So, if all of our classrooms have desks six feet apart, let's just assume that if there's no close contact, right? If that's the case, and I believe it is the case. We saw that last time. So, then how do we push that out to the course of the day? So, a lot of the rest of the day is going to be in court always. And so, you know, if students pass each other, that, what is that? Like five seconds? If somebody's passing in the hallway for five seconds, you can never trace that. But I don't know that, how would you be able to even assume cumulatively that that would add up to 15 minutes in passing in the hallway? So, then there's the other spaces. I guess I'm kind of taking a contrarian view about it. And I know their language changed, but as I try to analyze that, I don't know that I have the same level of concern. I don't understand the concern that they're trying to very carefully parse out with their words as long as our desks are six feet apart. So, I guess, as I just read this for the first time, you know, as we, as I was listening to you, I just don't understand how that, you know, within six feet for at least 15 minutes throughout the day, I don't even know how we would accumulate 15 minutes throughout the day if we're in our classrooms six feet apart.
So, even high school students, if they're moving between classes, unless you have a buddy that you are walking with every time you move, you're not going to accumulate 15 minutes with any one person.
Right. And don't forget, so our high schools and middle schools, with the hybrid model and taking out the virtual academy students, we're going to be operating at like 40 to 42% of what the school normally would be. So, I mean, I go to work, and we're like no more than 50 people. I see all the cars out there. I don't feel like there's anybody at work. So, I mean, just from my sense about operating schools at 42 or 40% of what a normal capacity would be, and then trying to figure out how you're going to have close contact for more than 15 minutes? I'm trying to be positive, and I don't see how that would happen. That's just my viewpoint.
Yeah, well.
And how to interpret that statement.
Yeah, and I guess the only thing I would say, and, you know, this is Campos, I think is in the back of the room, like to know that you'd have to see high schools, right? Like, there are movement points in the day where there are students that are going to congregate or be close to each other as they're walking. And I think the, there's a human nature element to that that very likely will not true in all passing periods. You're probably going to find yourself around similar groups of kids as you navigate from class to class. And I think the point to that, Brad, would be, I don't know with great certainty that that will happen, but I have to know with great certainty that it won't happen. Otherwise, I can't do the contact tracing. Much easier at the elementary school, right? Admittedly, much easier at the elementary school where the flow of traffic is very controlled. Kids are in that same congregate group for the entire day. They're not, they're not moving. There's a reality that you're right. We've taken great steps to limit capacity at the secondary schools, especially at the middle schools. I think, you know, that number and capacity, I mean, the middle schools will be smaller elementary schools for all intents and purposes. But your high schools are still going to have 800 to 900 individuals in them a day.
Versus normally?
Double that.
2,100.
Yeah. Yeah, no, so by capacity, I agree with you 100%. I guess I will say only that I think my responsibility in kind of due diligence is to tell you where I see things that I think are going to be very difficult to operationalize, and I need to be able to operationalize them. If I can't, I can't do justice to you as a board or to our community as a whole, right? And to Rob's point, I'm genuinely frustrated as well because you build a plan around a set of guidelines. And when that set of guidelines changes, all of a sudden, plans you've spent a lot of time building and putting into place can literally, you know, flip overnight, right? It's the set of individuals over along the windows and Bryce and some of our teachers that, you know, candidly are, well, we don't do it in person a whole lot, but they're going to start shutting their office doors with great vigor when I come and say, well, by the way, I got a new piece of information that, you know, that, you know, we're going to wrestle through. And again, generally, we have taken an approach through this because we believe in the power and the integrity of in-person instruction and that opportunity for kids. That we've taken an approach from the start saying if there is, if there's a boulder, we want to find a way to get around it or push it uphill, right? If there's a way that we can do it, we can do it. I just think my responsibility is to tell you where I think I'm starting to see some boulders that are going to be difficult.
Any other questions on health comments?
Just one, and that, you know, again, I think the test will be, you know, whether there's passing in the halls or there's contact tracing or whatever, the real test can be about two weeks. You know, whether, you know, if we start seeing a lot of cases. That's the concern I have. That's the one that all these words will bear out or not bear out. So, you know, even if we get more and more guidance from the health department, you know, truthfully, the end product is going to be what happens. And that's the one we won't know until we've experienced it. We've done a great job getting prepared for this, doing the separation and so on. But, you know, I see kids out in the street, and they're congregating. You know, after school, they're going to congregate. They're going to walk to the bus together. You know, is that going to cause the virus to pass? I don't know, you know? Some of that stuff in Georgia where they didn't have masks, you know, clearly, you know, they were congregating and they passed it. And, you know, so I guess, just as long as we can control the kids. And I, that's a tough thing in high school, you know? So, I, you know, so the words themselves are not the issue. It really gets down to what happens. And that gets back to bullet point too, is this a sustainable event? That's, and we'll find that out if we proceed in this direction. That's my final comment.
Okay. Jeff, you want to?
Yeah, I can move into the second bullet with this, which is staffing. And actually, I'm going to ask Dr. Kyle to give the board an update because he's been leading the HR teams as they've looked to staff.
Thank you, Rob. Jeff, would you just like me to share some of the details that we've done the past two weeks?
Dr. Schuler? Would you like to share, would you like me to share what we've been doing for the past two weeks?
Yeah, just share where we're at right now in terms of, I mean, the core question on the table is, do we believe we can staff the plan, so?
Yeah, so the past two weeks, we've been staffing the virtual academy and in-person. Actually, yesterday, we processed 13 new hires. So, I don't think staffing the new elementary positions in any way is going to hold us back. We had 1,100 applicants for the positions that we posted. So, we have a number of elementary teachers, so I'm not concerned in any way that we'll have staffing issues. The one piece that could be concerning that we are working with the union on is if there are more requests for leaves. Currently, right now, we had 122 requests for medical leaves or medical and their home leaves. Out of those 122, we were able to give 115 offers to virtual academy. So, about 94% were placed in virtual academy. But if we get many more leave requests, that could be a concern. That's our one concern is if we had more leave or childcare requests. But right now, hiring, we've had no problem hiring teachers for elementary.
Can I ask a question on the leave? Is there a financial implication when somebody leaves for benefits or anything? Or are they off the payroll?
Fair question. So, there are some provisions that are covered under the Family Medical Leave Act that there are some financial provisions for the individual that's taking the leave. So, to answer your question, yes, there would be some financial implication for the district because you're backfilling that position and likely carrying some financial support for the individual that's on leave for whatever window of time they're allowed to. So, the childcare leaves have limits in terms of the length of them. That would not be a full year piece, but certainly in the window of time, right, it would be. Again, I don't, I don't think the financial element is what would be insurmountable. I think as Dr. Kyle mentioned, that the issue would truly be more, you know, if we, if you had 50 childcare leaves that we didn't expect at the last minute, that could certainly cause some significant issue as you're trying to staff, or significant delay.
So, can I get an understanding on the teacher's side? If someone takes a leave, is that unpaid? Do they have benefits? How does that work?
If it is covered under some of the emergency provisions that were put in place based on COVID, they do have some financial benefit. It's not fully unpaid, right? They've got a percentage of their salary that's paid even while we backfill the position.
And what about their health benefits?
I can't hear you.
What about their health benefits?
Their health benefits would continue while they're on FMLA.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask where we're at in the process? Are we done with reports?
No, we're, yeah, we're done with the second one on, uh, on, on the staffing piece, right? The two pieces I wanna cover. So there's one more thing that I wanna cover with you, which is to talk to you about the, uh, the Remote 2.0, but
Yeah.
this might be a decent transition point if there are other general comments before we move on to that.
Any other questions on the staffing?
One more staffing question. How do we feel about our ability to put substitutes in if any of our teachers have to step out because they've got some sort of COVID concern?
Yeah, uh, so the, the question, I just wanna make sure, the question was how will we staff a substitute?
Right.
Situation, yep. So, uh, one of the things that we're working on the board will remember, you approved at your last meeting a pay increase for permanent subs. Uh, and so one of the things that, uh, Dr. Sloggy's been working on with the assistance of, uh, a couple of our, our retired administrators is that we've begun the process of hiring permanent subs. So our goal is to hit day one with probably forty permanent subs employed, deployed, ready to work wherever it is that we might need them. So we've been using the applicant pool for the positions to begin to contact individuals and offer them a, a permanent sub position. We're not sure exactly where or what school, but that would be our first bank of, of individuals that we would use. We will still have a daily substitute uh, pool as well that, that we can draw from, but I think the thought process going into this year is that we ought to hit day one with, uh, with permanent subs in place.
So is that substantially more permanent subs than we would normally start a school year with?
Yeah. Yes.
So, so I just have a couple of comments on that. First off, I'm surprised, pleasantly surprised that we were able to hire, had that many applicants and hire that many positions for the elementary, so I, I was very surprised by that. Um, have we heard of any employees specifically that have requested leave? I think it's the FFCRA, Family First Coronavirus Relief Act, that it, that is kind of the extension of the FMLA. Have we had any teachers that have, uh, put in for leave for childcare reasons?
Dr. Kyle, have we had any actual requests yet?
Not yet, no. Um, we've had people that said childcare was a concern, so we used those in some of our Virtual Academy positions. Um, we were, we didn't have enough positions to get everybody who had childcare, so we are working on different, uh, avenues to try and address that barrier.
And admittedly, again, through, I think, stages of the, the planning, as, as other districts around us have made different decisions, I do think that, that has the potential to complicate the childcare. So even individuals that when we originally asked the question may not have had a childcare issue, may in fact have one now that wasn't identified before, even as of today, as, as districts change that are right around us. I do think there's the potential that that number goes up.
Yeah, I made the comments to some people that, you know, the, the problem we, I think the problem public education is experiencing right now, that as more school districts start remote, they create childcare issues for other teachers in other districts.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I, I kinda put this phrase, the system is kinda, kind of eating itself and that, that makes it more and more difficult. And I think the staffing issue is, is very significant if, if we realize some of those things. And so, you know, last night, one of our benchmark districts in Elmhurst had to alter course and start remotely. And it was not because they weren't doing all the right stuff in terms of the, the guidance and the health and safety concerns. It was literally they had too much staff that would not show up to work. That is why they had to change plans. So, you know, I, I anticipate it's gonna be in the newspaper and we're gonna be told again that we're the only school district in this area that's, that's trying to, trying to stay remote. And, you know, if you dig beyond the details of the headline and you really understand what those key issues are, it's not always the metrics. It's some of these operational issues that cause so many problems. And that is certainly, it sounds, it's great that we've been able to avoid that boulder so far. Hope we can keep it going.
Right.
That's just my, my two cents on that issue. Any other?
Just to that point specifically, Brad, I want to embrace our teachers and what our teachers' union said just at the opening comments. They are prepared to be here. They are prepared to teach as long as we can enforce the protocols, right?
Yep.
And so we need, we need to embrace that. And I, that's why I appreciate Bryce's comments so much. And that, that's really, it's just so important. That commitment to show up and that stated commitment to show up. And I, I wanna acknowledge it. I wanna thank them for it. I wanna embrace it. Uh, and I just.
I wanna tell you how much we appreciate that, that commitment. That's extremely important. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you to our teachers who, who rallied around that point of view and statement. And I understand that's not a pure statement. I get that there's anxiety, right? It's not a hundred percent, hundred percent, but it is alignment. And that is extremely important. I just wanna thank, thank them for that. That's very important.
Yeah. I agree that, that every adult in the, in the building has to tell people to put their, I mean, I did it for our first speaker tonight. Um, I keep having to adjust my own mask. But I agree that if, if we're able to go this way, and I know there's still boulders, we might learn about the big boulder tomorrow at eight o'clock. But if we're able to do it, it's gonna be contingent upon everybody doing this.
Can I make a, a question or a point on that? So af- right, following our last board meeting and looking through the paperwork we were provided with for that meeting, um, two of the things that, pieces of paper that we went home from that meeting with were, um, self-certification notices, one for parents relating to their children and one for staff, um, asking that everybody sign off that they promise that they are doing a daily self-certification or certification of their children. All sorts of details in there. And then I sent a request in saying I would like to see a box on that same form that said, that someone has to check off that says that part of this certification system or part of this signing up for in-person either teaching or instruction, by checking this box, I'm indicating that I am planning to, or my child is planning to follow all the protocols that are put in place if they're coming to school, which to specifically include wearing masks. Cause I wanna make sure that we're not just saying it, but that we're making everybody acknowledge that by saying I wanna come to school, I'm saying I'm gonna play by the rules that we're setting out for them. So, cause we have had so many people throw comments to us by email about how can you begin to believe that high school students are going to wear their masks, or what do you do when a kid shows up and says he won't? So to me, it really should be as simple as if you're sending a high school child to school, you're having a conversation at home that says even for those people out there, and I know there are those people out there who don't even think masks are important and don't wear them regularly. If you send your child to school, you need to be willing to wear the mask and that just can't be taking any time out of our day to have to put that on the teachers. So are we explicitly asking people to sign off that says, yes, my child by showing up for school is going to wear a mask?
Yes, we've incorporated that in the form.
Great, thank you.
Couple, just based on a couple of questions. Are the, uh, you mentioned that we have a hundred and ten, I thought, you said, teachers that signed up for the Virtual Academy?
That had medical concerns that wanted to be a part of the Virtual Academy, so it was about a hundred and twenty-two.
Hundred and twenty-two. And of that, and the reason behind that is they're either concerned about the health issues or childcare?
Their health issues or somebody at home, somebody they live with.
Okay. Now, what was the childcare aspect? I guess my, let me get real specific. If a teacher that is teaching the Virtual Academy will do so from their, at home?
Yes.
Okay. And if they have children, younger children, which I know has been an issue here, uh, and they're accountable for the whole day, you know, we're taking attendance, they're providing, you know, uh, service to, you know, training and, and, uh, presentation uh, of, of those students that are in the Virtual Academy. How do we, how do we assure that, you know, they're devoting that time to it? I mean, you know, there, there seems to be a little contradiction there to me. If you don't have a childcare person taking care of your own children, how are you gonna devote your time as necessary to a, a classroom of what, maybe thirty students that are in Virtual Academy?
Well, obviously, the state has the five hours of virtual, and we've worked at the elementary, middle and high school on what it needs to look like and what needs to be put into the, the calendar. So with all of the teachers that'll be in Virtual Academy, that is our expectation, is that their focus is on the students in the Zoom, the students that they're working with. And obviously, no matter where they're at, if they still have children, they have childcare issues. We do assume that they'll be taking care of those and that they'll still be focusing on our students.
And we'll monitor that somehow. I, you know, it's a concern of mine, that, you know, uh, anyway.
I understand.
Uh, also, secondarily, the, we, when people signed up for Virtual Academy, they signed up under the assumption they had to commit to a trimester, I think was the term. Is there any opportunity to change anyone's mind at this point? Either, either way?
You're saying for?
Well, I mean, the one, I guess, Virtual Academy, if you signed up, you've already said you don't wanna, you won't come back. But what if, uh, you know, somebody that was in the seventy-five or eighty percent has now, because of the change in the rules or the whatever, wants to go to Virtual Academy? Is that a doable event or not?
Um, it, it would not be doable right now without us having more time to make sure that, so realize there's a ripple effect on then the staffing plan inside of a building. And so those two pieces have been aligned so that we know how many students we're accommodating for in person and how many through the Virtual Academy. So, so I think if I understand the question correctly, could we reopen people to switch? The answer is always yes, you could, but, but not likely without pushing back the start of school to make sure that we'd have the requisite time, cause then you have to rebuild the entire staffing structure.
We haven't heard any, had any feedback along that way. I've, I've seen it in the emails.
No, we've, we've seen feedback from, uh, from individuals. So no, I'm not gonna, and I, we've, we've, we've dealt with or had some, uh, some extenuating circumstances where, uh, we've worked with families and made some accommodations, but we have not moved the general like registration deadline to say it's, it, it is open again. I think, I, I just want you to recognize if you do that, you're restarting that entire process, right? Like, like depending on obviously what the movement would be, then you've gotta rebuild your entire
No, I understand.
staffing structure, so.
Thanks.
And the same would be true once the school year starts, right? That, that any, any point that you wanted to stop and realign, you could. It's just, and, and you've, you've got, with each domino, there are other dominos.
I guess I'm thinking that should be part of our plan, that that could happen, you know, to some extent, maybe one or two, or maybe twenty, fifty. I don't know. I, I, you know, it's a thought that it, as we kind of evaluate the whole process here, that that's, that's a potential issue, so. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Want to continue with your?
Yeah, so I'm gonna, Mrs. Murphy, if you're, uh, wanna, wanna come up. So again, third, third area and, and, you know, all, all related, we do wanna give the board an update on both the Virtual Academy and Remote 2.0. I think in some of the, the comments and, and I think is important regardless of the path moving forward, I wanna make sure board and community are aware of the fact that we have been putting significant work into preparing for what will the experience be if we do end up remote either with some students through the Virtual Academy or all students. So, Mrs. Murphy, go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Schiller, Board of Education, for the opportunity to provide you this update tonight. I do wanna start, um, by reiterating the, um, comments that, um, Mr. Kahn brought up tonight and the hard work and partnership of our staff through this whole process. We made a shift to remote learning on March thirteenth, and we have learned many things along the way. And I, we have had over a hundred teachers committed to this work this summer and thinking about all aspects from in-person instruction to a remote learning experience. Um, we have partnered through that and I have a heartfelt thank you to our teachers and all of our administrators for the countless hours they have, and thought they have put into this plan. I will also say, although we are speaking about the Virtual Academy, these plans do apply to our, um, a remote learning experience if we need to move to that. So I'm gonna start here. Um, at the end, in June, the last three days of school, our staff all participated in professional learning. And one of those professional learning, um, opportunities was called Universal Elements of E-Learning. There is no one way to do online learning. That it is an art and science that we are working towards, and we have identified key components that guide the work that we have built. First being, consider the needs of students and families to differentiate and personalize instruction. We have spoken about personalization and differentiation many times. It's always been about our students. But now we're talking about it for our families as well. As a former teacher in this school district, four different schools, I know our families are so committed and partners with us. And as we're in this new instructional landscape, we need that partnership as, um, to continue because this is a new adventure and it takes all of us committed to working together. Second, we believe that we need to provide a blend of both synchronous and asynchronous learning. And I've provided the definitions on the slides tonight, although we've talked about these terms for many months now. These learning experiences need to support a student's academic growth and the opportunity to connect and collaborate with teachers and their peers. We need to create a positive learning environment that promotes engagement, culture, and social emotional learning. And we need to, it's an opportunity to develop the stamina for our students, support student agency in developing skills so they can independently navigate their learning. So let's talk specifically about each of our levels and what that Virtual Academy experience will look like. At early childhood, Stephanie Mangini, who is our early childhood administrator, she will serve as the Virtual Academy administrator. Each group of students will have a dedicated classroom teacher. This teacher is certified in early childhood special education and ESL bilingual. Related services will be provided in both asynchronous and asynchronous experience. And our teams are working, going to work collaboratively to create a variety of both synchronous and asynchronous experiences that target our Illinois learning development standards. And finally, they're going to use a variety of methods for synchronous learning. That includes video conferencing, individual, small and large group instruction. We have developed frameworks that will guide the instructional schedule at each of our levels. Here you're gonna see the early childhood e-learning instructional framework. So the, the day is two and a half hours. We have a morning session and an afternoon session. You are going to see all the components that make up that learning day listed here. You're also going to see that we're gonna deliver that instruction in a variety of ways. It's gonna include live lessons. It's going to include pre-recorded interactive videos and choice boards. What I wanna point out here is I don't want, um, anyone to get the idea that we would be hosting a forty-five minute lesson in literacy for our youngest students. Our teachers are going to plan a variety of lessons that encompass all of those different learning opportunities, whether it's a live lesson, pre-recorded, or a choice board. If you've ever had the opportunity to see an early childhood teacher, they're masterful at getting, at delivering content in multiple areas in twenty minutes. You, if you watch an early childhood teacher in twenty minutes, they're able to deliver a lesson that hits literacy, math, and maybe a science topic, all while keeping students engaged. And so our teachers are gonna continue to use those um, creative strategies while they are delivering remote instruction as well. I'll also say that we've had lots of conversations about related services at the early childhood level. And the importance of partnering with our families to find the time that works for them, and it's a consistent time for those related services.
Can I ask just one question? Can you tell me what a choice board is?
I, thank you. That's a wonderful question. So a choice board would be a document that is developed. Envision a bingo board. And in that bingo board, you might have an activity in every different section and square. And students have, and families would work together to select the different activities from that choice board for, for, um, for learning experiences.
Thank you.
Great question. Okay, moving into our elementary Virtual Academy. Danielle Moran, experienced elementary principal, will serve as the principal for the elementary Virtual Academy. Each group of our students does have a dedicated classroom teacher. And a question we've received often is about our PACE programming that will continue to be a part of our Virtual Academy. We have developed an instructional framework. Here are some main, you will see that in a moment, but I wanted to walk you through some of the main components so that you some of the main components so that you, um, when you see it, it, it makes sense to what we value here. So, we have the framework, but each teacher will use that framework to develop their specific daily schedule with times, and that schedule will be provided to families so they have a very clear picture of what that day looks like. Daily learning activities, they include a combination of live lessons, pre-recorded interactive lessons, independent work time, and learning support time. So, we're gonna dive into that in a few moments. We have prioritized language arts and math to be areas that all students will receive live instruction daily. And finally, the most important point that we've had multiple conversations about is this last bullet right here. We, going back to the idea of working with families and making this an experience where our students all have access to content is very important. So, this is where we've talked about the importance of pre-recorded interactive lessons developed by our teachers. This will allow for flexibility and access to content. So, moving into kindergarten and that instructional framework. Our kindergarten day would be two and a half hours with the AM session outlined and the PM session. You're gonna see, it starts with a whole class meeting. This is an opportunity for the entire class to get online together, the teacher to welcome them to the learning day and talk about what that day is going to look like and what they can look forward to and check in with them, and SEL experiences as well. You're gonna see sixty minutes for language arts. That's divided up into two different kinds of instructional experiences. Our teachers use a combination of whole class and small group instruction throughout the week. And they do that planning based on the needs of their students and that instructional content that they're delivering. And so, this is where the beauty of having flexible options comes into play. There will be live lessons, but we'll also utilize pre-recorded lessons. They will have time to work on language arts assessment. Math looks similar to language arts. We'll, we'll work between whole group instruction, small group instruction with math assignments. Science and social studies, there's time for that too, but in kindergarten, it's often embedded into language arts. And then finally, there will be an opportunity for PE as well. Moving into our framework that we have developed for first through fifth grade, you'll see the times for learning there are the same as our in-person day. Let me walk you through what you'll see right here. Our teachers felt very strongly about check-ins during the day. So, it starts with a whole class check-in and then an afternoon check-in. We've talked about that could be after lunch, or maybe at the very end of the day, but those will be live experiences where they'll, they'll see their teacher and their peers in their class. We have thirty to forty-five minutes of science and social studies, again at our primary levels, that's often embedded within language arts. We have PE, art, and music, same time period that they experience for in-person. Language arts, at our primary level, it has a hundred and twenty minutes, and then at our intermediate level, sixty minutes. We've divided up that time again into opportunities for whole class and small group lessons, and then language arts assignments. Math, that is sixty minutes daily, again a model with whole group and small group lessons and math assignments. So, let me walk you through specifically what this might look like if I were a student. So, I may receive, I'm gonna talk about language arts. I may receive, um, a pre-recorded video, and all my classmates receive that same pre-recorded video that I would watch. And then I might also have another opportunity to work with my teacher in a small group during that time period. So, that gives you a picture of what that experience looks like. And then the last part of the day is something that we've spent a lot of time talking about and feel that is going to really help and support our families and our students. It's called learning support. Our teachers will be available, not just to our students, but also our parents, to conference and discuss and work together. The way this could look is a teacher could have a Google meets open, and students are working, and they can pop in and they can talk to their teacher and ask a question, or simply, as one of our teachers on the committee stated, they just want to hold up their work and tell me what it looks like and ask for me to tell them, you know, great job. So, um, we really felt like that was an important, um, part of the learning day, and our teachers talked about the flexibility of chunking that time across the day.
Melissa, can I ask a question about this, this framework? So, if we were to go remote, this framework would be similar then for what an elementary classroom would look like, because this is-
Me, yes.
Yes, okay, so this is where I have the question. Back when we left in March, we were at a stay-at-home order. Very few families had essential workers that were out there. We are in stage four right now, where we have so many fa- parents that are now out there working, and we were relying on them to be the partner. They no longer can. And so, if we go remote and these elementary kids now are going into daycare settings, they have no ability possibly for any synchronous learning. So, what is our plan for those students who are in a daycare setting all day and come home that night and have had-
Great question, and it's, it's one we've had multiple conversations about. So, two things are in place right now, and I, and I also want to say first and foremost, we always, this is where our problem-solving process comes into play that we use at a school, and we would sit down and continue to work and think about how we can support our families, but we've already had two conversations. One, we've put together a family distance survey that will be sent to all of our families that asks multiple questions, so we have a really good picture of what that home learning environment will look like, so we know best how to navigate those things so we can be more proactive. That's step one. Step two, this is why we feel the pre-recorded lessons are essential, because we want our students to have access to that content and those experiences. And I'm going to, I think this is actually a District 200 term we've actually crafted. Pre-recorded interactive videos is not mentioned in the ISB framework. We felt very strongly they needed to be interactive videos, where it was almost as if I was delivering the stru- the instruction and pretending I had a group of students sitting in front of me. I am going to, I, if I were in the classroom still today, I would hold up a book and I would say, "Let's look at the cover of this book, boys and girls. Now, you think to yourself and write down what your prediction is." So, we're almost, we're really creating that same experience, but recording it and allowing students to experience it.
I, I guess I'm thinking about the younger, the younger grades. And, you know, if we go remote, chances are, we would stay remote for a long period of time. What is that metric going to be that's going to bring us back?
Yes.
I'm, I'm thinking of first grader, for example-
Yes.
-who has no opportunity to interact with that teacher, really, if they are not there during the day. And that teacher, having been a teacher, how do I know my student? Kids are gonna fall through the cracks. I'm extremely concerned about, I'm extremely concerned about that. You know, and that connection piece, you know, that, that is so important. I, I guess I'm, I feel like we're in such a different place than we were when it was stay-at-home order, where we had, we, we could heavily rely on the parents. We, we can't do that right now. We can't assume that that's going to happen. And I'm, I'm very concerned that a year could go by and, and students are gonna get lost because of the restrictions now of if we happen to go remo-, I mean, and I'm talking about if we go remote, because people who chose virtual academy are saying they have that ability to be able to support. When I look at the numbers of, that have registered for elementary, and that's seventy-five percent, I wonder how many of those families don't have that ability? And, and that's why they chose that, because they don't have that ability. And now, we could be looking at fifty, a hundred students, more than that even, that we have no ability to be able to really interact with them over a very long period of time. So, I'm concerned, very concerned about that.
I think, I think you've brought up a challenge that we have had multiple conversations about.
I guess as, you know, as, as we're going into, and I know it's not a board decision as to, are we gonna go remote? Are we gonna open? That, you know, that, that is not something that boards are, you know, are required to be voting on. I would feel like we need to have more conversations as to what those plans are. I appreciate that you're survey, surveying to be able to get that, but if we're looking at really not large numbers, we need some big problem solving that's gonna be able to hap- happen to be able to meet those needs.
I, I think in response to that, or the follow-up question to me is, you know, if we, if we start off remote or, or start off in-person, I think the in-person is gonna help your position.
Right.
You know, if we go to remote down the road, you know, you, we're gonna be there where you were talking about. So, you know, by starting in-person, we have some connection maybe. Even if we started in remote, we're gonna have the problem you're describing. It's basically what happened last year. So, you know, I, I think that, you know, if we have to go full remote, I think we're gonna have to have further meetings of, you know, a board or whatever. I mean, I, there's a whole new task on the table if that's gonna happen, whether it's now or, or in the future. So, you know, how do we reach out to those students? I mean, you know, we had that challenge in March and, of last year or this year, I mean, and, you know, we did the best we could. So, I think that's the, you know, what we have to do is the best we could. And, you know, when I think about remote versus, uh, in-person, you know, training, I think, you know, the in-person is, makes that, that choice better. So, you know, I, I, I understand the, the concern, but I, you know, that's one we're gonna be forced upon us potentially if we go that way. And, uh, you know, that's a problem we can't solve very easily. So, anyway.
Moving into middle school and the virtual academy programming. Ian Smith, who's actually here tonight, sitting behind me, will serve as the secondary administrator, so that's for grade six or twelve, for the virtual academy. Our middle school teachers will, or students, rather, will have a dedicated team of teachers at every grade level that will, um, be a part of the, will deliver, rather, the math instruction, language arts, science, social studies, art, music, and PE. A question we've gotten often is, until we were able to build the schedule, we weren't able to completely answer it, but we are now, that fast-paced math, reading, and science will be offered in the virtual academy. And the focus for synchronous learning will be a combination of content delivery, small group discussions and collaboration, conferencing, learning support, and social emotional supports. There's two components to the middle school schedule that are each on a slide, and so I'm gonna walk you through the first slide, and then we'll move into the second component there on the next slide. So, um, one of the pieces of feedback we received in the spring was that some of our students had overlapping Zoom calls, and so we've corrected that by setting up this schedule you can see here, where this would be the times where those synchronous learning meetings would occur. So, the day would start out with an asynchronous learning experience, and then there's a series of times for scheduled learning, synchronous learning opportunities. You're gonna see it's, um, where we have the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday schedule, and then we have the Wednesday schedule where we've talked about that. That's the condensed day where, um, our teachers have that opportunity for collaboration and professional learning after 1:15. So, moving into the next part of the schedule, we, um, here, here you're gonna see how we've divided up each day. And so, I, I draw your attention to the first row. The first row outlines the content areas where students would receive that synchronous lesson and learning. The bottom row outlines the asynchronous content areas. But even in the asynchronous content areas, our teachers are available to help and support The Wednesday would follow the same model where every content area would be, um, for syn-, we would have synchronous learning for all content areas. So, again, this model is very similar to our in-person model. Moving into our high school virtual academy. Last time that we spoke at the board meeting, the update was that we were still working on scheduling and staffing to make some final program decisions around our virtual academy. We've had a large team of teachers that worked on vetting online course provider that we feel is high-quality, good, great experience for our students. Our administrative team, including, um, Dr. Kyle, Mr. Smith, our assistant principals who are here tonight, our principals that are here tonight, were all part of the final planning for our virtual academy. I think it's really important to note that eighty-three percent of our high school students right now are registered for in-person instruction. Seventeen percent are registered for the virtual academy. And you have to remember as well with our high school, we have hundreds of courses. And so, the complexity, there was complexity here. Here's the programming model that, that we have put in place. The virtual academy at high school offers the following. It has course enrollment for all levels. That includes advanced course options and a variety of lectives. In fact, because of the use of Edgenuity, our students actually will have different opportunities and new opportunities in the virtual academy that are actually in the in-person experience, like Introduction to Coding could be an opportunity for them. Edgenuity will be the online course provider, and this allows the opportunity for a self-paced, flexible model. But we felt very strongly about still providing synchronous learning opportunities for our high school students. So, there will be daily synchronous content-specific support with our high school teachers, and we'll look more at that in a moment. Every student will be assigned to a virtual academy teacher. This teacher will monitor their progress, their pacing, and provide social emotional supports and feedback. We will have continued connections to peers, teachers, and their high school, and they will continue to work with their assigned counselor for enrollment and four-year planning. Here you'll see an overview of what that, um, schedule looks like. They, all of our students will be enrolled in a daily virtual academy support period. So, that, that will be with one, a Wheaton North or Wheaton Warrenville South teacher, and they, that will be their opportunity to connect with their peers, check in with their teacher. They can receive feedback and social emotional supports. We have and will be scheduling daily content-specific periods where our students in the virtual academy have access to our teachers to get specific su- um, support in their course. I'm enrolled in geometry. I have access to a teacher from Wheaton Warrenville South or Wheaton North to get help with my Edgenuity geometry course. So, we will have content teachers available in all of those contents, uh, areas that are listed there on the slide. In the event that we do move to a, uh, remote learning environment for all of our high school students, then this is the schedule that will be followed. It's ver-, it's, it mirrors the, um, middle school schedule, the, just the times are different. We've worked together throughout this process as a secondary level to do that planning. And so, again, there are the, um, the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, Wednesday condensed schedule. And again, that idea of no overlapping Zoom calls. And then finally, really a mirror of what you saw at the middle school, just with some other, um- just with some other specific components to high school.
So that previous slide, this is only if we go full remote?
Correct.
This isn't the schedule, you know, for my, for a student that's doing e-learning or is home on Tuesday? Today, you know, in the hybrid model, you know, where...
Correct. This, thank you for the clarification question. Correct. These last two slides are for our students who have selected the hybrid model.
So, if students go on Monday and Thursday, on Tuesday they're doing remote learning?
No, our two, this is a great question. The two sections will combined into one at that point in time.
If we go all...
I think Dave's asking specifically about the blended schedule. So not what happens when you go to remote, but students that are attending in-person.
Right. As the plan is now, am my students gonna go to school, say, on Monday? And then they're gonna do remote learning on Tuesday?
Correct.
Is that, this isn't the schedule?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Because in that model, in the hybrid model, all of their synchronous experience is coming through the day that they are in-person with the teacher? Or on Wednesday where the teacher's running?
My confusion is, because on the Tuesday when my student's at home...
It will be all asynchronous experiences that have been provided by the teacher.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
No, it's good. I just, I was confused.
That was a really great question. Thank you for asking it. Lastly, a few notes about special education. We've had a reopening team specifically dedicated to the work for our students that, with special education and 504 services. And so they will continue to receive those services that are outlined in their individual e-learning plan. But our teams will update those plans after the first few weeks when they've observed students in the virtual environment. They will provide those services both synchronously and asynchronously. And students will continue to have all their special education meetings and other IEP mandates met. And that is the last slide in the presentation.
Melissa, can you share with us a little bit about, you know, situations of OT or PT or any other related services? How does that work virtually?
So, this is where the expertise of Erica Ekstrom comes into play. So, they have scheduled, our related service providers all work with the families to schedule specific time to work with our students. And then they may have a Zoom call, or they may provide them with specific learning activities that they also need to work on asynchronously.
So I'm talking occupational therapy, physical therapy. That's gonna require a parent piece at home. So I understand that for virtual, but I'm thinking ahead for remote. And that's a much bigger, I mean, our special education, it's a pretty vast, from, you know, higher functioning to lower functioning. And again, to make sure we're compliant with IEPs that are out there, that's a lot of coordination and services that we need to figure that out.
I will tell you, Erica Ekstrom has led a very large group of special education teachers, related service providers throughout the summer months for every level. They have thought comprehensively about our system in both the in-person experience and the remote experience. So they have comprehensive, detailed plans in that area.
Thank you.
The only thing I would mention, while I can't speak with specific detail around this, the phase that Illinois is in also determines the availability, perhaps even of resources inside the school building. So even if you're in a situation where the whole system is shifted to remote, it does not mean that some resources or services would not or could not be available still in-person. And I think a lot of what you're talking about would probably be some of those individual circumstances where much like you have at the, even at the early childhood level, there's drop-in speech, right? Where students are not receiving service, but they're able to come, drop in, and get their speech service. You could probably see perhaps a model like that that they have to play out as well.
And then one more question for parents of students. I've had a few contact me. There's some anxiety in, when are we letting them know what life is going to be like? Or have we started to let them know what life is gonna be like for their child that's in-person?
For our students in the special education program?
Yes.
Okay, so, well, first and foremost, we did host a Zoom call where we were able, Erica Ekstrom hosted a Zoom call that was able to update our families around our special education plans. And then as soon as our school starts, our case managers would start working with families as well.
And then our, I'm not quite sure the number that we have that are outplaced, how is that, is that also being communicated, you know, communicated as well? Do they know what their plans are? Those that we have to, that maybe we send to another more specialized school? Have parents been notified of what that looks like yet?
I'd have to get back to you with that exact, that exact answer. Of course, I mean, I believe that's probably a site-by-site piece based on the status of that individual facility that we might be using.
Thank you.
I have a few questions. So for high school, for the daily Virtual Academy support periods and, well, we'll start with that. Is that required for students to go to? Because I ask that, because in the, and I know the spring was different, but I know that, you know, my kids...
Susan, can you speak right into your microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry. That my kids were in, their teachers had those types of check-ins, and it would be them and like one or two other students. And so I guess, I think that's a really important piece for just pacing and checking in, but also social emotional, making that connection to the student. So I'm just curious if that is a required attendance for the student?
So I think you brought up a few key points here. First and foremost, there was a lot of different guidance in the spring from the State Board of Education. And one of those pieces of guidance that has changed is the requirements around attendance now. And so in the Virtual Academy at the high school level, there is mandatory attendance for that time period. That's the Virtual Academy support period. That's a mandatory attendance period. The content support periods are optional, but will become mandatory if our teachers deem students need to attend that based on pacing or they're, you know, they do need, they need help or express the need for help.
Okay. And then in those content-specific support periods that there are thirty-minute periods, and I'm just wondering if, and I guess it depends on how many kids are in the Virtual Academy total, but like, what if like fifteen kids show up to that? I guess I'm not sure exactly, like they show up and it's geometry. Is every kid gonna be able to ask their geometry question?
Right.
Who shows up? You know what I mean?
We're gonna offer multiple content periods during the day, so we hope that that won't happen. And that's something we're gonna have to, we're candidly have to navigate and work through.
Okay. And then going back, and this is both for middle school and elementary, that, you know, that PACE classes will be offered. And we received a couple emails, and I'm wondering about PACE in the Virtual Academy versus PACE, if the same classes being offered?
Yes.
So...
So at the elementary level, PACE Math will be offered at the elementary level for grades three, four, and five, just like in-person.
Okay, so PACE ELA is not offered in either Virtual Academy or in-person in the elementary level?
Dr. Slaggy, do you wanna speak to that?
Yeah, the PACE ELA will not be offered directly from the PACE teacher in either, in in-person or virtual. And just context for that piece is that the math part of PACE at the elementary level is the core curriculum that is solely delivered by the PACE teacher at the elementary level. And the PACE ELA portion at the elementary level serves as a supplemental piece, meaning it's twenty to thirty minutes of the ninety to one-hundred-and-twenty-minute block. So that responsibility will really be to work with the classroom teacher, working to differentiate for the student in ELA in both Virtual Academy and in-person.
And then, so then at middle school, math, reading, and science, fast-paced will be offered in both in-person and Virtual Academy?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I think that was it. Thank you.
I have a question about Edgenuity. Is that the third-party provider? And is that only for certain courses?
No, that will be our course provider for all.
And our teachers, I guess where I'm confused is on who the teachers are. Is that Edgenuity teachers then?
Edgenuity is an online course provider that provides self-paced opportunity. And there are video lessons that are a part of the Edgenuity platform. And so our teachers will support the content learning that happens in Edgenuity.
Okay.
I can give you, I'll give you a quick example. My daughter took a course through Edgenuity this summer as a summer school class through her high school. And so it was a social studies, world history course. So that Edgenuity is the content provider, right? So all of the content introduction lessons happen through Edgenuity. There were multiple individuals that introduced or taught content as a part of that course. So it wasn't even always through Edgenuity, the same individuals. So it's a little different than just like, you know, a single-class experience where it's the same teacher. So, but they are all asynchronous lessons, right? That are introduced for the students and then specific learning tasks or assignments that are assigned, as well as assessments that happen through the Edgenuity program.
So the Virtual Academy for high school is all asynchronous?
Except for the fact that they are getting learning supports directly through teachers from our high schools that are gonna be able to help them navigate and support their learning experience. So if kids have questions, if they're struggling, if they need a concept reinforced, that will happen through our teachers. And then that daily front time where we're doing the check-in, the SEL, monitoring progress for the caseload of students that our teachers are assigned to.
And is Edgenuity only at the high school level?
Only at the high school level.
And if we go remote, will we, will Edgenuity be the provider for the kids who are in the hybrid plan, or will that be...
It would depend on when you go remote. So if we start the year in-person and then transition to remote, no, students will stay in the path where they are. So, but the two schedules that you saw on the last two pages would be that experience. If the decision to go remote, so again, we framed out, I think, some of the decision points that are gonna be upon us really quickly. The conversation with the health department on the local health metrics are some of these concerns. If the decision is made before the start of the year to pivot into remote at the high school level, then we've got a decision to make in terms of folding kids back into their classes.
Okay. Thank you.
One more quick question on that Ingenuity, because I know you mentioned, which I think is exciting, the idea of possibly a coding class or something like that. Do we as a board have to approve new classes, though, if kids are taking things that we do not currently offer? I think, I thought typically courses came to the board for approval. I mean, I'm not saying I'm against it in any way whatsoever. I just wanna make sure that is there a process we need to be following?
I guess up to the board. If the board decided that it wanted to approve all those, we could. You approved Edgenuity. And there is a process through which all of those courses are vetted, and the content has been vetted. So I believe the purpose of the board review of curriculum would be satisfied through the process that Edgenuity goes through in vetting and approving courses.
I just, I didn't want it there to be a problem down the road that a course wasn't gonna be able to be counted for graduation because it was not an official course.
No. That would be, that's our decision locally to grant the, grant the student credit for that course.
So I have one question on early childhood. And so if we, you know, we've used the term, if we go remote, I'm gonna change that term, if we're forced to go remote at the early childhood level. So let's just say, so is there a path to still having in-person instruction at Jefferson for the early childhood level? I'm thinking, you know, we've got the special needs students, the typically developing peers. Those are, you know, we tuition-paid preschool students. We theoretically could decide not to offer that program, reduce capacity. It's already two, you know, half-days. Is there a path that we could even do in-person instruction at Jefferson if we're forced to go remote?
Yeah, I think there could be. I mean, I think the answer, again, in all circumstances, part of the answer is always going to be, what are the conditions that are at play that allow us to bring kids into the building, right? Even in Phase Three and Phase Four of the Restore Illinois Plan, there are different opportunities for how many students can be together in a cohort. And so I would say that, again, the same could be true even at the elementary level, that I, you know, I believe a decision or a pivot at the secondary level would not necessarily mean you are definitively in the same spot at the elementary level. I think it will all be around the, kind of the guidance on what's allowable and not allowable, and our ability to follow all of the expectations that have been laid out, which are very different at the elementary level than they are as you think about operationalizing those at the secondary level.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? Is that the extent of the presentations? All right.
Before we leave it, just a couple other items. You know, I think that we've, you know, we've talked about a lot of issues here in this section. And I think that, you know, we've challenged a lot of questions. We've been asked a lot in many emails. We've been challenged by, you know, issues along the way. And I think we, you know, we're trying to solve as many as we can before they evolve. But in reality, we won't even know until we get there. And I'm really proud of our staff for getting us to the point we can talk like this. Because, you know, I think a lot of districts really just kinda threw in the towel, the trophy. You know, we've really taken the steps since last March to make this the best possible situation for our students to succeed. And I think what we're doing here is we're making, you know, even the emails, as I've read those, you know, there's some things we can solve and other things that we can't solve. And some that we're trying to solve, and then there's others that aren't solvable. But I think that we're doing our best, you know, not perfect maybe effort, to make the best of what we can in these challenging times. I don't know how else to say it. And I'm really proud of how it's evolved and how the board has approached it, and the staff has approached it, the teaching, as well as the administrative staff. So, you know, I think we're gonna, you know, the word I would think would be the motto of where we're going here is flexibility. You know, all the things, everything we've talked about, whether it was the health issues or the training, the special ed situation, you know, that's gonna be flexible as we move forward here. We'll meet those challenges as we move forward. And I think we've done the best we can to offer our community some choices and make decisions to get it done. So, you know, and, you know, it's not perfect, and nobody's gonna be totally happy about it. But I think we've really done our due diligence in getting to where we are and ready to move forward. So, I'll be right back on it.
So just kind of organizationally, some wrap-up comments or questions. Dave, and then Jim Zorjina, and then Scott, go around the table and end up at me.
All right. I do have a number of comments. First, I wanna echo what Rob said. It really was helpful to hear Bryce talk about the teachers, because we have had a lot of communication, and it's nice to know. It's been my impression that they've been involved, that Bryce has been involved all along. And while, just like, we have a divided community on the issue of going back or not, teachers are in different places, you know, but their voices are heard. There is empathy for them. I know I'm empathetic for them. I mean, I do want my child to be in school, but that's our choice. But I am empathetic to those teachers that she may have that don't wanna be there because of their concern. But it's nice to know that the approach they're taking. You know, the emails, I guess I just wanna take a moment to say, because we, right now, because there's more people listening, but these emails, we all get them, we all receive them. receive them. I don't know if the public realizes we can't reply. So, you know, as practice, the staff replies, usually Erica, sometimes Dr. Schuler. On the rare occasion where a board response is necessary, then Brad will do that on our behalf. But sometimes I think people are looking for us to answer their emails, and since there might be a few more people listening than normal, I thought it would be good to point that out. But I do read every word of every one of them, and I know it's a barometer, but it's not guiding where we're going. I mean, I, I think it's been very consistent that the intent of the administration, supported by the board, is if we can be in school, we're going to be in school. There is a lot of, you know, a lot of comments about, even tonight, about who's making the decision. So to me, the, we are allowed to be open with the current guidance. And so the decision is, the decision is ours on how to implement that. Or the decision is, you know, so the decision is the district's. But the decision to close, to, to not be able to open is not, that's what we're talking about. We're waiting for, I mean, if, if we're allowed to open, we're going to follow the guidelines and do that, and that's what we're doing. And so I think, you know, I like the plan. I think what Jim said is right. We've been very deliberate. We've been very thoughtful. We, we talked a lot last month about choice. And I also think the other thing that's been misinterpreted, I like what Rob said, I'm speaking for myself, not for the board. I know that eighty, the eighty percent of the people that signed up for in-person don't all say, well, that means eighty percent of the community wants to be in-person. And I know that was acknowledged last month. So I realize that there's a good portion of that, but, but there's still, you know, there's still a lot of people that want to be in school. So, you know, and I know people are strong on both sides of it, and there's enough data out there to support whatever position. But I continue to, to like our plan and like the way we've approached it, you know, and think we've been very consistent and transparent about that. And the last thing is the ability to pivot. You know, there's been some concern about, we'll give it some time. I mean, well, we pivoted at about 48 hours in March, and if we have to pivot now, there's a lot more information. I believe we're in a lot better position to execute that a lot better, you know, with where we are today compared to where we were on March 13th. So, you know, I just, I, I support where we are. I know it's difficult. I respect everybody's opinions. I respect if other people, you know, people are probably livid that I say that I support it. But I do support it, but I respect everybody's opinion to disagree, and that's, you know, that's their prerogative. So that's what I have.
Jenna?
So you're looking just for general?
Yeah, any other kind of concluding comments you have or thoughts, questions?
Well, I'm agreeing with everything I've been hearing here. I, I voice the same frustration with the lack of guidance from the health officials. And, yeah, I think it's important just for the public to realize that, yes, we, everybody should be able to contact their school board and their district and share their concerns and their opinions. But we do need to be clear that we are starting from the standpoint that we're in the business of educating students. And if the state says schools can open following certain guidance, it's our job actually to try to do that. And we did offer, we have been offering an option for those who just don't feel comfortable coming back to the schools. But two things I think are important to note. One is, we absolutely had to have a line drawn on the calendar when people need to make a decision, and a lot of people seem to be outraged by that, but there's no other way to go about it, because you need to know what your needs are before you can staff anything. And we can't have people changing their mind every day of the week, because there's just absolutely no human way to put together a schedule with that. And secondly, people need to realize that as much as we, they have the right to voice their opinions, and we should be listening and, and understanding how people feel, that none of the decision-making is based on who screams the loudest. And it's all based on, can we safely put children in school and try and keep our school community safe doing that? Teachers, all the way down through the kids. So those things just need to be really clear. And otherwise, I appreciate also all the work that everybody's been doing, and I really, really appreciate Bryce sharing with us something official from the teachers' union, because that's hard to take all of the, the communications that we're getting and wonder whether, you know, where our teachers stand in this. So I appreciate Charlie telling us that we've got the staff to do it at the moment, and that the teachers will show up if we ask them to. So after that, I'm just waiting to hear, you know, from you folks about whether you think, like you said, we can push these balls up the hill or not, so. Otherwise, I'm, I'm good.
Jim?
I have my question.
Susan?
So I think, I'll start with that, I, I think a lot of the emails we've gotten, no matter where they are, and I've had people say to me personally, too, that, you know, I know this isn't what you signed up for. And my response to that is, well, we certainly didn't sign up to deal with a pandemic. We did sign up to deal with challenging situations that affect our school district. And in that sense, I'm, I just want to say to the board, to my other board members, that I'm very proud to serve with you. I think that we, as board members, all of us individually, were elected because of our critical thinking skills and our decision-making skills, and able to take challenging situations and objectively look at them and consider all the information, and provide thoughtful feedback to Dr. Schuler and the administration. And so I just wanted to say that, that I'm very proud to serve with all of you. I'm very, I think our conversation tonight has been very respectful and thoughtful, and I just greatly appreciate that. And I, and especially because, you know, and I really appreciate, Dr. Schuler, you saying at the beginning of the meeting, that this is the first time the seven of us have been able to discuss this. And I, I think people don't realize, sometimes don't realize that, that we can't, we can't discuss these as a group outside of this. We can talk to it, you know, I've talked to a couple of board members individually, but I think, you know, we have been getting all these emails with different opinions, and, you know, and they, by and large, they have been respectful, but some have been very difficult to read. And, and I think, you know, we've been processing that, each of us on our own, and I know that sometimes that has been very difficult for me, in that we don't have each other to lean on outside of these board meetings. And, you know, I know I get a little bit intimidated sometimes because we have to say these things publicly, you know, what we think, and it, it may not be something we, not in a, not trying to be secretive or non-transparent, but this is the only we can, we, the seven of us can, can confer on these very difficult and challenging situations, so. And that, I just want to agree with Jenna on that. I have really thought hard about what, what is my role as a school board member. I am also a mother of two children in the district, and, you know, I'm a community member. We're business owners in the community. You know, we are facing these challenges ourself, too. But as a board member, we have to, and all of us are parents of children. And, and I think we have to, we have to remind the public that as board members, we're here to do a job of providing, as Jenna said, providing education to our students. And we have to, in this board seat, we have to separate those things. And, you know, to, I, I, you know, so it, it, you know, I just, it, it frustrates me a little bit when there's the implication that, that we don't care about the safety of children, of our teachers, of our administrators. It's just nothing could absolutely be farther from the truth. And, you know, I, I know I haven't slept through the night in weeks because of this. So, I mean, I think, I just want people out there to understand that, that it's extremely difficult, and, but I think we're doing a really great job at trying to, to put it together. And I know that I, I actually went back to our oath of office and our principles of operation, and I just wanted to read, if I could, just three sentences here. That's the second paragraph of our principles of operation, that we affirm the unique role of public education whereby a community collectively pools its resources for the common good of all its youth. Therefore, we will seek to uphold and improve public education. We'll work together with the superintendent to make our district as accessible and friendly to the public as possible. And I hold on to those words and what our job is here. And I just want to commend Dr. Schuler and the administration for the incredible leadership that they have given our district, and that I am not terribly concerned about what the districts are doing around us. I am concerned about what District 200 is doing, the faith that I have in our leadership, and, and I feel like we are doing what is right for our community with the information that we have. So I think, I think that's about it. So thank you very much.
Rob?
I actually have a specific question. And I, we've, we've touched on it, but I'm not sure we've clearly stated it. If we have to pivot, and, and starting today, even today, what's the impact to our start date? If we have to pivot at any point at this time?
No, I think, I think fair question. Robin, I would answer that by saying, I think it, even as early as tomorrow, if we have to adjust plans based on information that we learn, I think it'd be very difficult to start school on the scheduled date. I think we would need a little bit of time to, to navigate through that, because I think I would come back to, I think, the point that, that Jenna made, and that's that, that, you know, if, if we, we reschedule and move to remote, you heard a lot of details tonight that have been, been put into play, but there still is a reorganization that's involved in that, admittedly, right? And, and again, I think, you know, as I've, as I've heard and read a lot of the, the comments, right, I think the goal is if we can open and we can follow the guidelines and the health protocols say it's safe to do so, we will. You heard at the front end of the meeting tonight, more significant concern with where we sit around that, and I think an important 24 hours that's coming in front of us as we, we really evaluate that. So I don't want to mislead anybody in the community to think that we are full speed ahead to the start of the, the school year. The reality, you heard from, from Bryce, you heard in some of my comments, that there are a couple of hurdles that we still need to navigate through. But I'll come back to your question by saying, I think if we have to pivot, very likely that we may have to look at, at that start date. Doesn't mean significantly, but, but we want to make sure, whatever we do, I want you to come back to that oath of office and feel good about the experience you're providing to the community and our students, and I want to make sure that we can attend to any of those details we need to.
And that includes having to pivot in future months? We're not, it's not going to happen over a day or a weekend?
Yep. And I, and I think that's important to, maybe, I don't know if you intended to go there, but I think important to note that we said from the start, how we start the year, I, I don't know how long we'll be in whatever that, that model is. So whether that be in-person or whether that be remote, it will largely be the, the statistics around the virus and the pandemic that indicate what the long-term plan will look like. And candidly, you know, something that I think we address, but the health department is going to say, it's going to be the behavior of our community that's going to dictate what happens in the long term. So cases are spiking, make no mistake, right? We're seeing some increase in that data, and that's without kids in school, and so that tells you something's happening, right? That's, that's leading to that. And so, you know, we tried to address that in the letter last week, and that's a message we need to continue to say, regardless of where we are at the starting line, in-person or remote, it will be the way that our, our community responds to the expectations around the pandemic that will ultimately determine if we can be in-person and for how long, and when.
Thank, no, I appreciate that. Thank you. The second thing I want to talk about is a, is a little bit of a new topic or a different position on a topic, and that's our students. So we've all seen kids out and about. We've been, it's been referenced in email, we've referenced it, I've referenced it. And I want to take a different tact on that. I want to, I want to think about how, how, how special our students are. And we'll go to buildings and visit our kids and see them and talk to them. Those are special kids, and how they behave at sporting events, how they behave at extracurricular activities. I believe in our kids, I believe in our students, and I, I see how our principals engage with, how the teachers engage with them. And there is an opportunity to create a culture, at, at a whole new level of caring about each other, and that it's not just about you as an individual student, it's about how you're, how, how do you affect others? Kids with IEPs, how do you affect kids with special needs? How do you affect homes where there's only one parent and you can't, they can't be supported in a remote? And so I believe in our kids to, to embrace that, and, and not in the habit of putting work on our, our staff, but I would, I would love to see special-focused communication on that, on community that is pushed through our schools, you know, just with that pure message. It's not about you, it's about others, and it's about the community. And I, I think, I just fundamentally believe in our kids, and I, I think they'll embrace it. Well, and I, I just see so many examples of it. So I want to take a little different tact on it. I want, I want to take the positive tact. I want to, I want to raise kids up to, to say, we believe in you, we believe that you're going to culturally protect others and, and care for others. And so I, I think that's important to say, that we believe in those kids. And the last thing I want to say is, I, I still, I don't want to leave any mistake, I still fully support this plan, with its contingency, with its focus on safety, its focus on kids. It puts kids at the center of the plan and what's best for children. And it does, and, and it's not a perfect choice, but it's a choice, and that's still very important to me. I, I, we've heard a lot of the nuances, and I commend, again, as everyone said, commend our staff and teachers for engaging and building it. But it's a plan that I'm still very, very proud of, and you just part, I'm, I'm proud to be associated with it, and I fundamentally believe in it. And I think that's important for the community to hear, that I am not wavering on that plan whatsoever, period. So thanks.
I want to first start out with saying, when I look at, I'm a former teacher, I'm a former teacher in this district, and shy of our college professionals and first responders that are up there, and then snatch downs me in terms of respect, are our educators. And I've been in this classroom, I know what it entails to make those connections with kids and for everything that they're doing. And I also know that this whole new style of teaching is coming with a lot of work on their part. And, and I want us to recognize that, that we appreciate that they are almost on a daily basis having to rethink. And I know I pushed back a little bit tonight, and I pushed back on those questions because I, it, it's students. That's, that's why we're all here. It, it's our students. And I know our teachers want to do, I, I can't imagine being a teacher and my only interaction with my students is virtual for, for however long it takes. There's so much that happens other than content. And I had the privilege last fall of speaking to the new teachers, Brad, let me, let me have that privilege. And one of the things that I shared with the new, with the new teachers was, I went and I surveyed several students that had just graduated, and I asked them, what advice would you like me to give to new teachers? And they said, every single one of them was about the connections and how teachers made them feel special. And, and that's my biggest fear if we go all remote, is how do we continue to do that? And it's not that I'm questioning our staff, because I feel our staff is going to go above and beyond. They, they have shown us that in the past, and I have no doubts there. But I'm, I'm extremely concerned for our kids professionally. I will emotional learning and substance abuse curriculum, and I, I know how things are on the rise right now in terms of, of mental illness and mental health issues and substance abuse, and I'm, I'm really worried is if, if we aren't getting some face-to-face time. I am also worried about that level playing field. You know, I, I know our private schools in the area have waiting lists because they're worried that we're not going to open, and those schools are. I'm worried about all of these small neighborhood, community pods that, that families are coming together, and that's how they're, they're, they're going to be learning. And, and, and I'm, I'm worried about public education. And so I'm, you know, I'm putting that out there. And, and I'm, I'm hoping that if we have to pivot, we can be as creative as we possibly can to still see students in a way, and I'm going to go back to what, what Bryce said, the protocols have to happen. And not only do they have to happen in the school, they have to happen in the community. And I have personally lived in a situation where my husband has been an essential worker since this whole thing started. I have watched a COVID bubble happen in his office, in his warehouses that he's at. He was one of the people. I've lived fear, I get the fear more than, more than most people understand. So I know what that's like. But I can also tell you where they had 13 people in a month's worth of time that all had COVID, since they have their protocols in place since the second week of May, not one. And so protocols do work. And it's, and it's imperative that we, as a district, follow them for the safety of our students and our staff, but we have to remember, it's got to continue. Our community has got to step up and follow those as well, outside. But, you know, and I also want to say thank you because Melissa, I know I pushed you a lot tonight and, and asked you some tough, some tough questions, but I, I, I agree. I am 100% behind the plan that we have right now with the data that we know. And if that changes from Health Department, we have to listen to the Health Professionals. I, 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 I truly feel that. But I'm also confident that we are doing what we can to try our best to get some in-person time and keep our students and our staff healthy as possible.
Thanks, Chris. So I'm not sure what I can say more eloquently than all of you have said. I think it's been wonderful. I, I thank you all for your comments. You know, we, we've talked a couple of different times here about how we can't meet in person. I've really tried carefully over the last four to six weeks to make sure I talk to you individually. We've had, I know I've had multiple conversations with each of you, and those have been very valuable for me and, and hopefully for how you're thinking and how, how we're thinking as a group. You know, I think about all the words we said, and I kind of go back to Susan's talking about, you know, kind of our oath. And, you know, I recognize the obligation we have to children. And I think about Dr. Rammer, when he, you know, he had his last talk and last meeting, and he came and talked to us and reminded us that before children, before the students walk through our doors, there are children. And those children have very diverse needs, and it's our job to meet those needs. And that's why the seven of us are at this table, and that's why all the administrators around us are here. They've spent an, an entire career dedicating to the needs of children, and I just, there's so many reasons why children need to be back in school. I think about the behavioral and mental health issues that was an issue before, and I believe it's going to be even a more significant issue going forward, especially if we don't get those kid, the kids back in schools. You know, we talk about equity. You know, we know that students across different races and socioeconomic situations, that school provides a very critical environment and structure to enable learning to happen and to enable social, emotional health. And I think that in many respects, the school kind of serves as an equalizer where society doesn't. We know we have students in home circumstances that are not necessarily as supportive as, as they need in school, and men respect, serves as that respite and provides a chance and literally provides students their meals. And, and we talked about special need students and how critical those students are to, you know, having that in-person instruction and interaction with professionals. It's, you know, and how, how much the families rely upon our, our teachers to, you know, kind of move those students, there, those children forward. And we know that our English language learners need that face-to-face learning. So it's not just, you know, kind of the, the, the way people typically think about our community. There's so many different layers to the needs of kids, and, and that's what I'm thinking about. And I know our teams have been working tirelessly all summer to balance all these issues so we can bring two teachers and students back to school safely and responsibly. And I feel so strongly that we need to try for our students, because I, like Chris maybe mentioned a little bit earlier, if we don't start the way that we need to, I fear we're going to lose not only this semester, but the whole year conceivably, because what's going to change? You know, you can debate whether there's going to be a, be a vaccine or not. You know, I, I just, I just worry that it could be a lost year. So I, I really feel very strongly that we need to try everything possible, knowing that we have boulders in front of us, to do everything we can to bring students back and, and make the best decisions we can with, can with the information we have. So I'm totally supportive of the plan. You know, I'm comfortable with the safety procedures and alignment with the guidance that we've developed. I feel comfortable enough that my daughter is intending to come back in the hybrid plan at the high school. And even if we're forced to start remotely, I'd love to find some way to try to, you know, have kind of some starting block where kids have some connections with their student or their, their teachers as they gather their information. And just start off a little bit, and, and even if it's a week or two weeks, I know other school districts have realized that. If, if there's any way for us to do that, that would be wonderful. And then finally, I love what Rob said about how you need to think differently. You know, I, I think about the comments that Jim has very appropriately talked about, the observation of kids outside of school and, you know, not wearing masks and social distancing. And maybe, maybe school's the place where we can change that behavior, where we can change that structure, you know, start thinking about the community as opposed to individually. I, I, I think it's a great opportunity that school provides, and that's what we're here for. So, again, I'm, I think we're all on the same page, that if we're able to continue with the plan of starting as we've done it, we, we should move forward with that, recognizing that we still have a couple hurdles, and we know that we have teachers who are very concerned, and I'm totally sympathetic and empathize with them. Love to continue working through the process and doing what's right for children. So those are my comments. All right. Anybody else?
One quick follow-up, just to add one thing to what you were just saying. There's 20, 25% of our students and parents that are not going to be in class. So I think, you know, I think we've taken the steps to provide, you know, the Virtual Academy program that will be, you know, a much different experience than what it was, say, last March. We've planned it, we, we're offering it, and, and it will continue to provide, you know, a good education for those people that are electing to, to proceed in that direction. So, and I, and I'm really happy that we've assigned a principal to that function, and, you know, we've addressed the curriculum and so on. So I, I think that's an important part of what we're saying here, is that 25% or 20%, whatever the number is, of our students are still going to be not in class. So, you know, again, we're, we have to devote and continue to monitor that, that, that section, so.
Okay. So next, well, we don't have any action items. I think we've kind of gone around the table, and I wanted to have a little conversation, maybe a straw poll about where everybody sits, but I think we know where everybody sits right now, so we've kind of, we've kind of done that. One discussion item we still have on our agenda is the continued discussion from a few weeks ago or a month ago of our equity and proactive practices work.
Yeah, so I, I want to just know something after. And this is a real question to have about proactive practices. Weeks. I mean, we, I mean, this is, and I would really hate to presentation and not have us as engaged as we probably should be for this, because this is really important. My suggestion is to table this to our September meeting.
I agree.
I agree completely.
100%.
Okay, so to formally do that, I need to
I have, I'd like to have a motion to
Brad, I thought about it, it's not actually an action item.
Oh.
It's just a discussion item.
Okay, yeah, you're right.
You can just table.
Right, right. Everybody
Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, can I, I just want, I mean, I know this is not at all what you're saying. I think you just, it's, it's a highly important issue.
Yes.
And we're not, we're not trying to kick it down the road. I know that's not what you're saying.
Yes.
I just kind of want to reiterate, you know, that it's, we just, we need to put it at the top of the agenda, talk about it, you know, after public comment
Yes.
at 7:30 at night. And I just want to make sure that that's very, very clear, that we just want to be in as top mind as we, as we can to really articulate what needs to be done here. So we don't mean to be kicking it down the road by any stretch of the imagination, but I, I agree with you, Chris. I would just, I just realized that it's 10 o'clock, and I was like, oh my gosh, this is, you know, another very important
Extremely.
You know.
We did have the presentation on July 8th, I believe, and we did have some discussion. So it's not like we've keep pushing, it came down the road. We, I think we just collectively felt as a group that we wanted to have a much deeper conversation. And, and one of those points, which I'll talk about in a minute, is creating a board committee around it, so when I introduce the board committee. So the conversation's continuing, I just echoing Chris's thoughts, we want to give him more justice.
Yes.
So, you know, I see everybody shaking their head, so we'll just move on from that. Future agenda item, Dr. Schuler. We do have four written reports on our agenda. One is the monthly financial reports, the Freedom of Information or FOIA report, the Early Learning Center construction update, which is just about finished. I know we have a, a date established for a virtual ribbon cutting ceremony. We have the board communication log as well. These are provided for information. Any questions or comments from board members on those?
Can I just send a, a quick recognition? I know a couple of board members mentioned it, but it kind of relates to the monthly financial reports. I, I take it from the feedback from the board that the bill listing as a result of the new financial system
Yes.
much improved in terms of
Outstanding.
That, so, good.
Yeah, very, very helpful. Okay, any reports from board members? First, any board committee reports? We, I did include in the agenda the July 6 Finance Committee meeting, or any additional information?
Yeah, primarily, we dealt with the budget, which was modified, and we, we've displayed.
Any other reports from board members?
Just on the, the equity topic, just real quick, we did, there was the Equity Task Force that, sorry, had the first meeting last week. And so, and I attended that meeting. It's a good diverse group, and so there's some good activity going on, and I'm excited to be part of that group.
Right, so that's a citizens-oriented task force, right? Okay.
This is the one that Dr. Marcus Kroom, is that his name, is leading?
Right. Good. Any other board member reports? I do have one thing to go over, but
I just had a question, and you might, you actually might say it, because I know you sent out the email about the new committee assignments.
Yeah.
When do those take effect?
As soon as I speak, speak to them, and as soon as you're done.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So on that point, thank you for the entree. So we, I, I passed out to all the board members, kind of our thinking. Chris and I and Dr. Schuler shared some thoughts on maybe reorganizing the committees a little bit this year, so thinking about a variety of different, different things and the value of getting perspectives from lots of different committees. So we have, as a school district, we have five board standing, standing board committees. So the, the plan for this year would be teaching and learning to be Chris and Rob. The Finance Committee meeting would be Jim and Dave, leading that effort. And then the Facilities Committee meeting being Jim Matheson and myself. And the reason I was thinking that is more and more I'm feeling the facilities and the finance conversations are so linked. It'd be, it'd be nice to have some connection between the two committees. I had Jenna and myself on the Community Engagement Committee, and then the HR Policy Committee would be Rob and Susan. So that's the, the plan right now.
SEO.
Uh, yeah, there's two special board committees that we've established. Those are, I think, by policy called ad hoc committees. So we have the one that we are going to continue around SEO with Susan and Chris leading that for the board. And then the new one, the Equity and Proactive Practices Committee, which is related to, was part of the conversation from July 8 about the Equity and Proactive Practices work. So for that committee, I think Jenna and Dave would be leading that effort to kind of launch that. And the connection you would add, Dave, to the Citizens Committee you just mentioned would be a very valuable, valuable thing. Board liaison to the Citizens Advisory Committee, Rob and myself. And then, as we did last year, the Board Liaison to the Student Excellence Foundation would be just kind of rotating schedule where they come to us one meeting, and then one of our board members goes to theirs. They were pretty happy with that process, it turned out pretty well. Again, we like them having some visibility in, in front of our public in those meetings. And then in terms of the board representative to lend, the Legislative Education Network of DuPage County, which is a lobbying group that works on our behalf, I would be the, continue to be the representative that participates in those. And then finally, we've, for several years, done this adopted school assignments, and talking with a few people, we think for this year, it's probably just better to put it on hold and see how things go. I know that one of the objectives are going to be to minimize visitors in the school, and I know that our principals are going to have so much on their plate that they don't need to feel like they need to entertain a board member and keep them up to date on stuff. So for the time being, at least to kick off this school year, let's, let's just put that on pause. So that's the plan for this year. So now, Susan, those committees assignments are made.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a topic for future discussion, which is the 2020-21 budget. Our next committee, the whole meeting, would be on September 23 at 7:00 at a location to be determined. Our next currently scheduled board meeting would be September 9 at Jefferson Early Childhood Center. I will add, like I did in July, that given Dr. Schuler's recognition of the boulders and the potential guidance tomorrow, I think it would be smart for us to maybe hold next Wednesday, again, as a possible meeting, should we need to gather as a group to review things or further discuss any potential pivots or boulders that we can't move. So stay tuned for that, but I'm sure Dr. Schuler, Dr. Schuler will be in, in touch with us here soon on that.
Can I ask one, one quick question of the, the board? So just something we've had a conversation about and, and maybe for the next couple of months. I know we have the next regularly scheduled meeting at Jefferson, and I very much obviously want to get the board into Jefferson, which you're going to be able to, to do for the ribbon cutting. I think it would be easier for us to stay here for a little while, because we've invested so much in the camera equipment that moving that to a lot of buildings. So we, we can look at the future, at kind of getting you back out to buildings on a rotation, but can we, at least as long as we want to continue to livestream the meetings, can we keep the location always here?
Yeah.
Good with me.
Okay.
The only comment I'd like to have on that is maybe we could have a, like a host or a host school presentation
Sure.
so that we're hearing what's going on in the school.
We can, we can still invite
Yeah, even though it's not at that facility.
We can do that, for sure.
Good idea, Jim. Okay, do we have any public comments on non-agenda items?
No.
No, no public comments? So there being no further action to come before the board in open session, can I have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting?
Still moved.
Moved by Mrs. Crabtree. Seconded by Mr. Hanlon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.